Ryan, we see you there. We'll admit you when your time is up to begin.
Counsel, I will call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, January 26, 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perro?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Or Councilman Burton?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor? Your motion?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
We have a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I have a motion, a second, to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, nay? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will next move on to our department commission reports. First item up is the Solid Waste Advisory Commission Annual Update. I will turn this over to Mr. Corey, I believe, if...
Mr. Mayor, I do not see Mr. Corey, but I did invite Tom Odde in, so he can hopefully help us identify him.
Okay. Tom, oh, you got Steve now?
I am getting on with him right now. I should have him shortly. He doesn't... Oh, he's on now. I see.
He's on. Mr. Corey, thank you for joining us. You are recognized as soon as you are able. And if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Corey has no audio. Looks like there's video capabilities, but no audio. So you may want to call that number and join.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
We want to move to Mr. Lancaster and the Transportation Commission while we figure out Mr. Corey's situation.
Do we have Mr. Lancaster on? Okay. All right, we can do that.
There he is.
And Mr. Clark, if you can try to communicate with Mr. Corey on that. Okay, Mr. Lancaster, you're recognized for 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Ryan Lancaster, and it's my pleasure to participate in this work session on behalf of the Transportation Commission. Now, the presentation I have for you today is on alternative intersections with extra emphasis on roundabouts. These intersections come up periodically during commission business and during council business. So there are several fairly new commissioners, and the commission asked for more information on alternative intersections. I made this presentation to the Transportation Commission in December. With the Transportation Commission being an advisory commission to you, we've looked for ways to have more interaction with you, and we thought sharing this presentation with council will be an opportunity to reach out on a topic that comes up from time to time in the commission and council. And even with any luck, we can maybe be on the same page. Some of you know me better than... So I thought I'd give a brief introduction of myself. I'm honored to say that 2021 will be my 10th year serving as a commissioner. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I'm employed locally as a traffic engineer. Fortunately, my employers have been supportive in letting me take time off to participate in the commission all of these years as a citizen volunteer. I'm a professional traffic operations engineer and a member of the National Committee on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Between my employment and volunteering through the commission, I'm involved in transportation on the national, state, and local levels. And it's a lot of fun for me to bring my education and experience to the commission and be able to influence topics within our city limits. I'm sorry I can't be with you in person today, but in trying to be a good citizen, I'm taking the city's recommendation and presenting from my home. So I don't want to spend too much time in preliminaries here, but I thought it might be helpful to do a little introduction. So with that, I'd like to start the presentation. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm open to either taking questions during the presentation or at the end, whatever works for you. So to start off with just a little bit of information about intersections. So why we're even talking about this. Intersections are the source of about half of severe crashes on our roads. And left turns in particular represent a high proportion of those. These first few blue slides that I'm going to show, I borrowed a lot of these from the Federal Highway Administration, and I don't plan to show, to talk about everything on the slides, but we'll just hit a few hot topics. So some of the benefits of using alternative intersections over what we might call conventional intersections are improvements to safety performance, operational performance, and value. So if you can get the same or better operational and safety performance out of an intersection with a smaller footprint, then, you know, there's improved value there as well. So these are the four alternative intersections that I'm going to touch on. Roundabouts, restricted crossing U-turn or R-cut, median U-turns, and displaced left turns. So I'm going to touch on a couple of these real quickly, and then we'll spend the rest of the time talking about roundabouts. So, you know, why do we do alternative intersections? Here's an example of why we do them. This is the Eagle and Fairview intersection from Google Earth. And, you know, it's a huge sea of pavement. You know, the approaches to the intersection are up to 10 feet, or I'm sorry, 10 lanes wide plus bike lanes. And, you know, so roads can take up a lot of land in the city, right? So if we can do, if we can serve the same users with less footprint, that's a benefit. I'm just going to touch on the first two bullet points here. Some common denominators between all of these. They treat left turns differently than a conventional intersection does. And there's fewer conflict points, or less severe conflict points, or even the conflict points are separated from the intersection. So with roundabouts, these have been around with us for 30 years now. First modern roundabouts in the United States were built in 1990, so about 30 years. The modern roundabout designs are an improvement over what used to be built, in particularly the east part of the United States with rotary intersections. They can be used in lots of different situations, high speed, low speed. The design of the roundabout doesn't change. The operations of them are still relatively low speed, but they can be used in any, in any kind of intersection. So there's different flavors of U-turn intersections, R-cut, Michigan U-turn, through U. So the example on the right is, I'll show another example here, where ACHD recently built one of these in one of these intersections in Boise. They go by different names depending on whether they're signalized or not, but the principles are the same for all of these U-turn intersections. This is the one that ACHD built in Boise. So off of Veterans Memorial Parkway, the bottom left to top right road. Left turns are still made as they might normally be. But on State Street, to make a left turn, a driver actually drives through the intersection and then makes a U-turn in a right turn. So this takes the left turns out of the intersection, separates them, separates the conflict where there's not as many conflicts, and turns it into a right turn. So that's the benefit of this type of intersection. So I'm going to move through these pretty quickly. So the next one is displaced left turn. And this one is pretty interesting in that, again, the left turns are treated differently, but the left turns are actually moved to the left side of the road and then make the turn. So a few years ago, when the Idaho Transportation Department came to talk to the Transportation Commission about planned improvements on Chindon, there were several of these intersections proposed, and they were almost apologetic about proposing these other intersections. I said, "There's no need to apologize." You know, I made a comment in the commission meeting that there's no need to apologize. If we can have better operations, you know, with different intersections, then we should. So again, this is just an example of how that intersection works. The Utah Department of Transportation was an early adopter of these kinds of intersections, and they found improvements in their crash. They had fewer crashes, and they had improved travel time. So with that, I plan to spend the rest of the time talking about modern roundabouts. I actually got this graphic from city staff, Brian McClure, so thanks to him. But, you know, there's some, sometimes trepidation about roundabouts. People think that they're difficult to traverse, or they're, you know, whatever the reasons might be. Really, roundabouts are simpler to use than a, we'll call it, conventional intersection. Again, you kind of separate conflict points. So there's, you know, the decisions are to accept a gap to enter the intersection, to enter the roundabout, and decision when to exit the roundabout, and that's really it. There's no looking left and right to see if there's gaps in both directions. It's just looking left to see if there's a gap to enter the intersection. You know, there's a National Lampoon's movie that makes fun of old circular intersections that, you know, once you get in them, you can't get out. That's not the case in a modern roundabout. You just enter and exit, you know, at the desired place. So the outside lane always turns right or goes through, the inside lane, who left or U-turn. There's a few features of roundabouts that make them roundabouts. So there's a central island that traffic circles around. Usually, it's circular, but I'll show some examples that aren't. There's pedestrian features. If there's, you know, if pedestrians are expected to be present, there are splitter islands on the approaches. There can be bicycle facilities. There's truck facilities. So all of these things are designed in to accommodate all of the, all of the road users. So some of the, well, these are the features that are present in a roundabout. So if some of these are missing, it's not by definition a modern roundabout. For example, in my neighborhood, here in Meridian, there's a circular intersection in the neighborhood, but it doesn't have splitter islands. So while it's a circular intersection, it's not a modern roundabout per se, because it doesn't have all of these features. This is kind of a famous picture in the roundabout community in that this comes from New York State, where they took a older, large rotary intersection and actually built a modern roundabout in the middle of it, and then demolished the older rotary. So roundabouts are relatively small. They're designed to have low operating speeds in them. And this is just an example of old verse, old designs versus new, if you will. There's a few roundabouts sprinkled around through Meridian. This shifted just a little bit, but I think you're familiar with these. This is kind of an interesting piece of information in that some researchers did some surveys before a roundabout was constructed and after. And so the dark green are the attitudes before construction. And, you know, so you look at this, and there are, what, about 65% negative or very negative? And then after construction, the lighter green, it switches to about 75% positive. And so the perceptions really changed before and after. I mean, it really flipped. So, you know, I think we see this in things like land use, right? Kind of the, not in my backyard, NIMBYism, right? But, you know, once roundabouts are built and they find, and users find that there's improved performance, both safety-wise and operations-wise, the attitudes change.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
Crashes.
Ryan, I mean to interrupt you, but I think you invited that. Can you go back to that slide? I'm just curious if you could give us a little bit of background on where that data came from and how recent it is. It's compelling to me, and I just, I didn't know if it's based on a domestic survey response, an international survey response, an Idaho survey response. Can you help fill in the gaps about where this was conducted and when?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I'll be happy to. There is a source here at the bottom, and I'll describe what that means. So NCHRP means National Cooperative Highway Research Program. And so a synthesis is they talk to a bunch of different agencies and compile their results. So this is United States data. That research report, I think, is getting a little bit dated at this point. It was about 10 years old. So again, roundabouts have been in the United States for 30 years, and so this was done about 20 years in. But that's the source. This is a national survey in the United States within, you know, the last 10 years or so.
Thank you.
Okay, so roundabouts and crashes. Earlier, I talked about how the alternative intersections change or reduce the number of conflict points, and this really shows it with a roundabout. So on the right, there's 32 conflict points, whereas on the roundabout, there's only eight. And most importantly, it eliminates all of those blue dots, the crossing dots. So the potential for the worst kind of crashes, the T-bone right angle kind of crashes. And here's just an example of that. So it, a roundabout really eliminates the angle and left turn crashes. The kind of crashes that can occur in a roundabout are side swipes, rear ends. So, you know, the kind of crashes that may bend, you know, vehicle bodywork, but don't break passengers, right? And so there's an improvement there. When comparing signalized intersections to roundabouts, roundabouts perform much better crash-wise, and it's really because you eliminate a lot of those opportunities for the worst kinds of crashes. So the fatal and injury kind of crashes are weighed down. Locally, some agencies have found that there's still roughly the same number of crashes in a roundabout intersection versus a, quote, "conventional intersection", but that the severity goes down. And then these are the same comparison with a two-way stop control intersection versus a roundabout. And it's because it, again, eliminates some of those more severe crashes, but also makes the driving task easier. So at a two-way stop intersection, you know, the driver has to look right, look right, and look left to find a gap. Whereas at a roundabout, the driver only needs to look left for a gap. I think I'm going to skip this slide for the, for time's sake. Roundabouts really work well in corridors. You know, just an access management kind of topic here. You know, so let's say a driver, a road user, wants to leave one of these developments on the left side of the picture and turn left. You can eliminate all the left turns and force the driver to turn right out of the development, make a U-turn around the roundabout to make the left turn. So to use the roundabout to basically turn it into a U-turn intersection. So they work particularly well with access management kind of topics. You know, roundabouts and signals kind of like different things in a signalized corridor. It's good to have vehicles grouped up together in platoons, so a whole group of vehicles can go together through the intersection on a green. Whereas roundabouts, it's nice to have the vehicles separated more, because they're served one vehicle at a time rather than as a group. And so roundabouts and signals can be used together, you know, if the operations are somewhat compatible. So for example, where there's, or the signal may or may not be, you know, based on that grouping or that platooning, an example of that, you know, that's kind of right in the middle of Meridian is Locust Grove and Fairview. And I'm told that the the signal timers have a heck of a time with that, because it's hard to get those groups together. And so that's an example where, you know, a roundabout really could be used relatively close, because there's not that platoon traffic. So roundabouts and signals can be used together in the right situations. Roundabouts and pedestrians is a topic that seems to come up a lot. There's a perception that roundabouts are bad for pedestrians. I'm here to share the opposite, actually. So we're taught, and we teach our kids early on, to look both ways before crossing the street. In a roundabout, you don't have to. So here at the bottom right of the picture, I have a pedestrian sign. That's going to be our pedestrian for crossing here. So the pedestrian has to look left when there's a gap, crosses to the splitter island. At the splitter island, pedestrian looks now right and crosses through the leg of the intersection. So this is, you know, the same concept for why I'm told that some city employees like to park in the parking lot across from Meridian Road and walk down to the tire store to cross, where, you know, the crossing is essentially the same as this. Cross a few lanes of traffic that go one direction, cross a few more lanes of traffic going the other direction. So it splits up that task.
Mr. Mayor?
Conflicts?
The Strater?
Strands?
Oh, thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to ask a quick question while it was on my mind about the safety. How much of, how much of the safety factor? How much of, how much of the safety factor depends on the landscaping of the roundabout? Like, one of the things that I experienced, like, I'm trying to cross a roundabout. I think I would be afraid that I'm not seeing a car that's actually just about to like quickly come around the circle. So are, are there standards about that and how much is that a factor in the safety?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Strater, that's a fantastic question. So landscaping is actually one of those required uh, parts of a modern roundabout, and there are some, some guidelines and standards for that. Um, there, it's actually preferable to have um, a, a mound, to have something in the center of the roundabout to give the uh, the road users, usually drivers, enough vision to see to the left, but not too much to see across the roundabout, for instance. Um, so that is a design check, um, to make sure that there's enough, but not too much um, sight distance on the approaches to the roundabout. Um, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, it does.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so the roundabout, some pedestrians, um, there's fewer conflict points for the pedestrians as well. And again, those conflict points are separated somewhat from the intersection. The pedestrian or the crosswalks are set back from the intersection. Um, whi- which makes it easier for drivers to. It separates the driving, uh, the, the vehicle conflicts from the pedestrian conflict. So they're taking more one at a time rather than a whole bunch of conflicts presented to a driver all at once. This is an example in Boise, um, a re- relatively recent roundabout built by ACHD, and I show this because it shows how ACHD is, is currently treating pedestrian crossings at roundabouts. So they have the pedestrian signs and these flashing, well, these lights between the signs. Um, they're called rectangular rapid flashing beacons. They're activated by a pedestrian pushing a button. It's just extra warning to the driver that, that there's pedestrians there. But I also show this because it shows um, you know, a relatively short distance um, for a pedestrian to cross. You know, in contrast, again, you'll think back to that Eagle and, and Fairview intersection where there's just a sea of asphalt to cross. But it breaks up the pedestrian crossing into smaller pieces. So this often comes up with the commission, um, roundabouts in the vicinity of schools. So the, the national guide that, that talks about planning, designing and constructing roundabouts says that roundabouts may be optimal for use near schools. And, and it's really for the same reasons, um, you know, for the pedestrians crossing at, um, at roundabouts. So shorter distances, um, easier cra- crossing task for the pedestrian. One thing that, that may be a little bit different at a roundabout for schools is it may be necessary for there to be two crossing guards. Um, for example, one crossing guard could do the, the dark green arrows and one crossing guard would do the white arrows. Um, you know, so depending on the school, depending on where the, the students are walking, it may be necessary to have two crossing guards. But otherwise, you get the same benefits. Um, you know, just some local examples of roundabouts in schools. This is Middleton High School. There's two roundabouts right adjacent to the school. Um, Hillside um, Middle School in Boise, so it has this bug bone or peanut shaped roundabout. And here's a picture of, of the crossing there. So again, kind of the same treatment, the flashing lights. Uh, I think this is Lincoln Elementary School. So, you know, there's a high school, a middle school and an elementary school. So I have two more topics and then I'll be done, but roundabouts and bicycles. So bicycles can, in most roundabouts, they can approach a roundabout in two different ways, either as a vehicle or as a pedestrian. So here on the left side of the screen, um, there's a, you know, we'll say there's a bicycle approaching on the bicycle lane. There's a ramp provided where either the bicycle can continue through the roundabout as a vehicle or exit and uh, traverse the roundabout on the sidewalk. So another advantage around abouts is the, because the operating speeds are slowed inside the roundabout due to its uh, curvature. Um, the vehicle speeds are really about the same speed as a bicycle. And so it, it can be very comfortable for a, a bicyclist to traverse a roundabout as a vehicle. But there's the option provided. Um, so the, the bicycle could enter the circulating uh, roadway or traverse the crosswalk and then enter the, the bike lane on the far side of the intersection and continue on in the bike lane. Last topic, roundabouts and trucks. So roundabouts are built um, for a, a design vehicle, usually a, a, a large vehicle, a commercial truck. You know, movement of people and goods is, is an important thing. And so the uh, colored pavement that's usually around the, the circulating roadway, it's not just for decoration. And it's actually meant to be used by the trucks, so the, the trailer can off-track onto that colored pavement. And that's how the, the, the larger vehicles traverse around about. This last picture is a, a roundabout recently built in Rigby, and I just think it's kind of cool how they staged it here. So with that, Mister Mayor, that's the, the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Ryan. Council any questions?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Um, Ryan, thank you so much for taking the time to share this with us. I'm just curious, um, you had showed a picture that um, had basically two lanes going in each direction, roundabouts at each end and um, kind of a bou- a boulevard style, and I'm wondering how um, that affects commercial areas and whether it encourages or discourages um, customers from accessing different businesses along those corridors.
Mister Mayor, Councilwoman, um, I'll try to answer the best I can. Um, I'll take uh, I, I hope I can answer your question here. If I missed part of it, please let me know. Um, so one of the perks that I have in my job is I get to know some people around the country and um, Washington State has been very proactive in building roundabouts. It was very interesting to me to hear from their state traffic engineer that um, they had a corridor where they built a corridor of roundabouts like this. And you know, that their trucking community said uh, no way, but they built it anyway. And after they did, the truckers came back and said, we were wrong. We can actually drive this corridor um, or, or we have, our travel time has gone down um, since you built these intersections. So you know, it improved the corridor. Um, as far as access, um, I'm not sure I can, you know, say too much to that other than, you know, in, in this example, the, the inner, the roundabouts are fairly closely spaced and so um, any, you know, detour around the roundabout is, is fairly short. Um, you know, access is always a concern as a, as a traffic engineer, you know, access. Uh, there's this balance, right? The balance between um, land access and, and operations. Um, as a traffic engineer, you know, I know that accesses can increase crashes and can um, you know, degrade operations. And so that's why traffic engineers like me usually push for combined um, approaches or write-in, write-out approaches, that sort of thing. And so roundabouts are a strategy to um, accommodate full access. Um, but, but with just a, a short detour perhaps around the, the roundabout. So I'm not sure how well I answered your question, but that's my attempt at it anyway.
Council, any further questions?
All right.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, we will head back to item fifteen, which is our Solid Waste Advisory Commission Annual Update. Um, see Mister Corey is here and unmuted himself. Steve, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Uh, well, the time is yours.
I am uh, getting kind of a message on my video, so excuse the fact that my video is not on. I'll just go into the uh, text and we'll uh, so I want to, uh, thank you, Mister Mayor and members of the council. I am Steve Corey, Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. And I'm here representing the commission to report on the twenty-twenty activities of the commission. Um, the commission was reduced in staff to five members for much of the year with three vacancies. I served as chair. And Commissioner Meg Larson served as the Vice Chair. Youth Commissioner Isabel Cow has been very active, and we are very thankful you appointed her to a second term. Uh, I want to thank the council for filling the remaining three positions this fall to bring the commission to full staff. One of our primary responsibilities is the Community Recycling Fund Program. Uh, this year, there were no expenditures to that fund. Uh, the fund had an initial balance of just over thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Revenues for the year were uh, just over four thousand, three hundred dollars. So the ending balance is thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cents. SWAC conducted its uh, other primary responsibility, the review of the FY twenty-one annual solid waste rate adjustment. Uh, the rate adjustment for both commercial and residential services was comprised of the contractual CPI adjustment and the uh, continuance of the recycling processing costs shared by consumers for another year, uh, as set forth in a separate contract amendment. Other twenty-twenty activities included the Trash or Treasure Program uh, and our participation in this Ada County Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Ada County Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Quarterly Meetings. SWAC received presentations on Republic Services Quarterly and annual reports on the Hefty Energy Bag Program, on the Ada County Landfill Tipping Fees, on the FY twenty-one Proposed Solid Waste Rates and New Fees, and on the Solid Waste Program Metrics and Data. Upcoming commission business includes acting on results from the most recent city survey, uh, furthering improvements in recycling efforts, promoting Meridian's Trash or Treasure hand-in-hand and recycle-a-bicycle programs, uh, continued focus on reducing contamination of recycled streams. Uh, particular emphasis on education outreach to decrease contamination, monitoring your yard composting market trends, uh, continuing participation in the Ada County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, participating in the Ada County Hazardous Waste uh, program meetings and working with Ada County to resolve their desire to simplify landfill rates. Uh, I want to highlight SWAC's continuing work to develop a solid waste plan for the city of Meridian. SWAC created a subcommittee to work with city staff to develop the goals and expectations for the plan. Uh, despite the pandemic, the committee met bi-weekly, both in person and remotely, as the guideline advised. Uh, the committee was chaired by Commissioner Mark Nelson and included Meg Larson, Scott Walters, Isabel Cow, and it was assisted by Executive Member Rochelle Klein of Republic Services. The committee presented updates to the commission and ins- and was instrumental in guiding the vision of the city based on the knowledge and uh, survey results that we have. So in conclusion, it's been an active year for SWAC despite COVID. Uh, but SWAC looks forward to recovering our momentum and guiding the city's improved solid waste in coming year. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Council, any questions?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Steve, always appreciate you joining us. Nice to see you, I guess, or hear you virtually. I'm curious if you'd mind giving the council a, a flavor for maybe some of the projects or initiatives SWAC is hoping to take on this year. Is anything new or something on the horizon that you guys are looking to explore?
You know, I think what, what I'm wanting is for us to steer towards this solid waste plan, and it's uh, as mentioned, it's the goals and objectives that we're going to try to uh, pursue uh, as a city to improve our solid waste and recycling programs, but also to actually have a documented plan for how to attain those uh, activities. Um, it's something we'll bring to council for council's uh, concurrence when we pull it together, but uh, we've reached that size of a community where we can actually direct where we want to go. And so what we want to do is have a written plan of how to get where the citizens want to go on uh, waste management and recycling.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Even, a piece that may merit consideration as you're doing that plan is, you know, I, I guess I'd be looking for if the, if appropriate for a recommendation or a suggestion from SWAC around weekly recycling in Meridian. And perhaps part of this is being led by COVID and, and more people working out of our home, but I've heard from more citizens in twenty-twenty uh, wanting to know more about how they can get uh, you know, either another bin um, or getting their recycling picked up on a, on a weekly basis. I've got two bins. I don't have any issues paying for a second bin, but I'm wondering, or work from home, I think will become more of a standard, uh, even when life returns to normal with the vaccinations. This may be kind of, for all intents and purposes, the tipping point for us to start exploring, you know, weekly recycling in Meridian.
Thank you, Council, Councilman Kavner.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, one, one thing that I've mentioned, um, at least in passing, that I think would be fun to take a look at for the year is looking harder at cardboard as well. Um, with the advent of digital delivery, I feel like we're all overrun with cardboard now, and the, the recycling prices for cardboard have gone up. Um, and so I'd hope that we could do something around cardboard, maybe in partnership with Amazon or with Republic, but it seems like there should be an opportunity specifically there. So that's something that I'd like to see.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strater. We'll go ahead and get that uh, forwarded to the committee for consideration.
Council, any further questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Appreciate you uh, working through the technology issues and getting on today.
Just my fault for uh, trying to use the older system.
Thanks, Steve.
Fair enough. Okay, next item on the agenda uh, is a presentation from Community Development regarding South Meridian Neighborhood Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Uh, this will be, I don't know if we have anybody from Community Development. We're just going to go directly to Edinson with ACHD. Looks like that will be the case. Hi.
Good after, good evening, Mayor Simison. Uh, let me share my screen here very quickly. Can everyone see my screen? Yes, perfect. And let me expand this. And so, good evening. Uh, good evening, Mayor Simison and Council. My name is Edinson Baptista, ACHD Senior Transportation Planner. In today's meet, in today's presentation, I wanted to introduce the South Meridian Neighborhood Bike and Pedestrian Plan and provide a brief overview of the neighborhood plan process. The South Meridian Neighborhood Bike and Pedestrian Plan is the 16th plan on the neighborhood plan process. This graph displays ACHD-level completion of the neighborhood plans that have been adopted. With the Garden City and North Meridian, the neighborhood plan are the most recent plans adopted on September 23, 2020. This graph reflects that once these neighborhood plans are adopted, there is an ongoing process of working the projects identified in each plan. As of now, ACHD has completed 287 projects and 145 projects currently programmed in the Integrated Firework Plan. In this slide, I wanted to highlight the South Meridian Planning Area. The light polygon delineates the overall city limits south of I-84. The neighborhood plans aim to achieve the following goals. Identify in map the biking and walking destination as it pertains to the planning area. Through a robust public outreach process, identify the need for connectivity, transit, biking, and walking facilities to gather a general consensus for community recommendations. Develop a plan that communicates existing conditions and needs, as well as convey proposals for projects to both the public and ACHD. Through analysis, technical review, and public outreach, define, prioritize, and rank projects that address the needs identified. Additionally, we will identify existing gaps in the sidewalk and bicycle network. Throughout this process, we aim to brand the neighborhood plan to ensure recognition through the community of these planning efforts and ACHD's continual commitment to bike and pedestrian improvements. Through the standard neighborhood plan process, public outreach is conducted in two different stages. First, through a student outreach, we work with students in the planning area to identify any concerns or recommendations they have regarding their route to and from school. And second, through the public involvement meetings, where we work with the public to identify the general needs and recommendation for the planning area. In this slide, I wanted to present the project schedule. As it has shown, we kicked off the neighborhood plan process back in December. And during spring of 2021, we're planning to conduct the public outreach effort as well as the project identification process. And during the summer, we will conduct the project prioritization and development of the plan. During the fall, we plan to present in front of the ACHD Commission with the final draft of the neighborhood plan. Throughout the entire process, we're planning to visit the city of Meridian City Council at key points throughout the entire project. With this, I conclude my presentation. I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you for presenting. Just one question. South Meridian is developing rapidly. How long do you expect to go after a community has a neighborhood plan? How long of an interval do you expect before you come back and do another plan?
So, following the planning process, this is an iteration process that has... As we started identifying the needs, we will evaluate... We will take into account all those elements to determine the next time we will come back to each of the neighborhoods. And that way, we will tackle those new needs that are coming up in each location at that moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you very much for being here, Edison. So once the plan is finalized, that information is used to start funding changes that are recommended by the plan? Or can you take us through what the steps are after the plan is finalized? And also, wondering if this is integrated or affected by the... I understand now that ACHD is going to develop metrics for pedestrian and bicycles as far as like tracking accidents, tracking, you know, number of multimodal users and things like that. Is that correct? And is that integrated or affected by this? I guess, help me understand any of those connections, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and counsel. So after adopting the neighborhood plan, the process goes... So this planning tool, it can be used by the city staff and as well by ACHD to add those projects into the overall Integrated Firework Plan process. So through that, we go through the normal prioritization process and then rank to determine which through the timeline that goes into the project list. And yes, the ACHD is working to develop what you would consider performance measures for the bicycle pedestrian network. And overall, that will go into the Integrated Firework Plan and more than likely influence the neighborhood plan process after it's there created.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Edison, I just want to make sure, you know, we have an extensive pathway system in Meridian and plans for a more extensive pathway system in Meridian. So I'd assume you're working with our Parks Department and our Pathways Coordinator, Kim, on making sure you're collaborating and integrating those systems together. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Yes, we take into account the extensive amount of planning that the city of Meridian have done in their pathway network, the existing and the future of that path network. And we're planning to implement those elements into our neighborhood plans to reflect that uniqueness that has the city of Meridian.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have reached item 18 on our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Burt.
I move that we go into executive session, Pareto Code 74-206A1A.
I have a motion.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden?
Aye.
Governor?
Aye.
Burrow?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Hogan?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes, and we adjourned to executive session.
How are you?
Okay.
Where's that thing?
Oh.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
If we come out of executive session.
Second motion.
I have motion, second to come out of executive session, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Do I have a... Councilman Kavner?
If we adjourn our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Motion second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, we are adjourned.
Council, call this meeting to order for the record. It is January 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the community invocation, which will be delivered by Michael Pearson with Seventh Day Adventist Church. Pastor Pearson, you're recognized. Thank you for being here and for those in the audience, if you would join us in this or take this as a moment of silence or reflection. Pastor Pearson, when you're ready.
Pastor Pearson, are you able to hear us?
Pastor Pearson, if you can hear us. We can hear you, it sounds like. I guess we will just have to forego the invocation this evening. All right. Next item was the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. There were not, nobody signed up under public forum this evening. So the next item is Department Commission Reports. First item is Resolution Number 21-2253, appointing, resolution to appoint Zachary Shoemaker to the Meridian Transportation Commission. Council, if I could just take a few minutes and talk. I sat down like we normally do with the Chair of the Commission. We had, we had a new Chair of the Transportation Commission now. It's been David Ballard for many years. But we, we have a new Transportation Chair and we sat down with applicants and interviewed folks. And it was a tough decision, like it always is. We've got a lot of qualified people who are very interested in transportation is, you know, one of the main things people are concerned about in Meridian. But when we looked at the current makeup of the Commission, that often can be as much a deciding factor because the Transportation Commission has more criteria than our other commissions and trying to keep it balanced from a resident perspective, a business perspective, and a geographic perspective. And while all the applicants were outstanding, Zachary Shoemaker rose to the top and his appointment also helps meet those balanced needs as he works for a business located here in Meridian, lives in Meridian. So if he fits a couple of different boxes from that standpoint, he's very community focused, lives up in the northern part of our community, which is where we want to keep some of the representation up there. And so I would propose that we appoint him to the Transportation Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
One, thanks. I really appreciate that you're putting these applications as part of kind of the agenda topic. Allow us for council and the will of the public to kind of review this a little bit more before we come. You always bring forth strong recommendations. Appreciate you involving the Commission Chair in this process. I don't have any questions. I'm happy to make a motion unless anyone has anything they'd like to say. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 21-2253, appointing Zachary Shoemaker to the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I know Zach Shoemaker, he's a, he's a dear friend of mine and I highly qualified for this role. He has a lot of experience in public policy. He has a graduate degree at Boise State and is prime for this, for this, for this role. Very excited to cast my vote in favor for him and wish him the best of luck.
Thank you, Councilman Burton. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Zach. And I know Zach is on the call with us today. Zach, if you have any comments, we'd love for you to take a second and address a nice, large audience.
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor and Councilman Burton for the nice words. I, I look forward for the opportunity to, to help out the city of Meridian, continue to grow and look forward to with, yeah, with offering any insight and information I can help create and, and get good policy and good transportation decisions for the city. So thank you for this opportunity. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Zach. Welcome aboard. Council, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 21-2254, which is reappointing Stephen Yearsley to seat for the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission through April 30th, and appointing Nathan Wheeler to seat for the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission with effective date of May 1st, and appointing Maria Orchard to seat to the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, had an opportunity to sit down and interview a great candidate for planning and zoning. You know, this has been, this is one of those issues when you're a growing commi, community that you gotta really take the time and find the people that are gonna meet the, meet the needs and have that feeling of what the community is experiencing and bring stuff to the table. With this, with the resignation of some very qualified people, you know, start with Ryan Fitzgerald, who opted not to seek to be reappointed, and Stephen Yearsley, who's been filling in, but has kind of said he wanted to do it in a limited capacity. So he's really trying to replace two people in a very, with very high, two very high quality planning and zoning commissioners with others. But I think we, we found a good balance in this. Ryan and Stephen both came, one came from the southeast and one's in the northwest, or two highly growing areas. We want to try to maintain that as much as we could to keep that balance. And it actually worked out perfectly because Nathan Wheeler, who is working to be a chaplain right now, so he's, he's not in the area for the first next couple of months or, and would only be able to maybe attend. But you know, the Army has their own standards about when you're allowed to talk and do things and go to bed. So he, you know, Stephen agreed to stick, stay on for a couple more months. They'll give Nathan an opportunity to get back to the area, you know, and it really comes down to, you know, people's hearts for the community from that standpoint. So we all know Stephen. I'm not gonna spend any time really, I just want to say thank you to Stephen, quite frankly, for continuing to serve and be there when, when we need to. But Nathan has a background in what land development. He's familiar with all aspects, you know, from real estate to the backend, on the construction side, you know, really from a standpoint though of helping cost out projects. He lives in southeast Meridian. He's familiar with the area. He, he's really lived in that part of our community most of his life, whether it's Boise, Ada County, Meridian, but kind of in that south, southeast, southwest parts of the area. And he, he, we really talked about what's, what's important to him in terms of good quality standards, good development, talked about some of the things that he liked in our community and also gave examples of some of the developments that he wasn't as excited about. So I got a good flavor for that and why. And, and you know, he, he's, he's a champion of responsible growth and being mindful of the inputs and how that has impacts. So he's, he's the one that moving forward to replace Stephen Yearsley. Second up is Maria Orchard. She comes from a long, long time Meridian resident. And I think there's a real value towards having people with the real historical perspective of our community about where it's been and where it's going and still wanting to be part of that from that standpoint. Been here since 1995, a business owner, currently owns property both in a subdivision and agricultural land in this area, property that will be impacted by the Highway 16 extension. And, you know, really tries to balance the growing needs of the community along with really the historical aspects that we all love. She talks about her love for downtown, talked about the love for historic places and how do you incorporate that into a community that continues to evolve over time. I think she'll bring a great balance and perspective to it. She's shown that she's not afraid to get in the trenches as she served on a, a school district boundary committee, you know, from that standpoint. So this with great enthusiasm that I bring her forward as well for your consideration. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about these applicants.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
First of all, let me say thank you to our applicants. I served on Planning and Zoning Commission. It's very dear to my heart and I'm, I appreciate the, the desire to volunteer, first of all, but also to volunteer specifically for this and to use all the talents and skills that, that have been acquired over years and years of service to our community in different capacities. I did carefully read through the applications. I was very curious about all of our new commissioners. The question I have for you though, just one of my, the, the things that, the thing that kind of surprised me was it seems like Mr. Shoemaker, who we just talked about, has, has more of that new construction, maybe some planning experience and had applied for the Transportation Commission. And yet, Mrs. Lordcher seems to have that transportation experience and applied for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just wanted to hear a little bit more about that. And I mean, I trust, I trust the, you, Mr. Mayor, and, and everyone who's involved in that interviewing process, but I just, I was just curious about that. Thought you might share for us.
I'm sure from a, from a, from a overall perspective, and, and you know, Mr. Shoemaker did express at one point in time, a potential, maybe in the future, interested in planning and zoning. He is involved in the development community. I think we always have to take a quick, hard look at that as, as part of it. And yes, while Maria does have a, her business is in the transportation world, that's really not, I, I won't say that's not where her heart is, but in, in her service, I think she's really, it's a bigger viewpoint about a long time Meridian resident who wants to be involved and connected to the changes in growth and being part of that. And figuring out how she can help us move forward while maintaining our small town historical roots where appropriate. Any further questions? If not, do I have a motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
Comment, then I'll, you'll be happy to make a motion. Just again, appreciate these nominations and I think you touched on something that I think is important for us on council and important for consideration for future appointees. We focus so much on the value of people coming in that can understand the process, but I really applaud that you've worn out and found some candidates that have some historical knowledge about our community. I think that's as important, if not more important, especially on our Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, great appointees, a great slate. I'm really excited for our Planning and Zoning Commission, who's been doing really, really great work for a long time. Mr. Mayor, with that, I move we approve Resolution Number 21-2254, we're appointing Steve Yearsley, Nathan Wheeler. four, appointing Steve Yearsley, Nathan Wheeler, appointing Nathan Wheeler, and appointing Maria Orchard to the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those? The ayes have it, and the resolution is agreed to. And I believe we have two of the, two of the three with us at this point in time. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we just have Maria.
Okay, all right. Maria, if you'd like to unmute yourself and make any comments, we'd love to hear from you.
City Council and Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am excited to work with all of you and the future of Meridian.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it very much. Okay. With that, counsel, we will move on to our action items this evening. Yeah, that's, that's, that's your guys' call on that one. It is on the agenda, so. So counsel, the next item on the agenda is appointment and swearing in Tracy Bastard-Achea. This is the Chief of Meridian Police Department. So first, I guess I gotta make my case for this from that standpoint.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think you, it shouldn't take you too long to make a case.
Okay, well, I, I, I appreciate that very much then. I will say a few things. And I, and just from the practical standpoint, I'm supposed to read his bio. You know, I'm gonna skip the bio from, from the practical perspective. It's been put in the news releases and whatnot, but I just want to, you know, say thank you to Tracy for agreeing to step in and take this role. I saw Chief Levy here tonight, and, you know, to, to make that transition, to help prepare someone who can step up and have the support of the department, of the law enforcement community, the regular community, and then be willing to step into that role, it means a lot to the community. And so I've appreciated the last month that we've spent, you know, on the phone, emails, exchange documents, getting to know each other. You give me a book that I will read. I promise you, I will read that book. For those that don't know me, that's a big concession on my part in life to, to take that effort. But it, what you've really have brought through these conversations and is talking about your vision moving forward. And we know that with you, that starts with the dignity and respect, and we're really focused on that in terms of what that means to our community, you know, when, when, when the officers are out doing their work, what they can expect. And that goes a long ways in saying, this is the right way that we want to continue. Because how we treat others, as you mentioned, is how they're gonna treat our officers. And that's, that's a huge element to look at. Your forward thinking on the service and delivery, I know that you and former Chief Levy really worked on what that, what the future department was gonna look like, because we know we're in that time of transition, both from a how service should be delivered, what service should be delivered, and what our future of our department will look like as we are aging through our department, and we'll have change in people and leadership over that time. And, you know, obviously your connection to the community, the dynamics, you're, you're connected, you have those relationships, and you're gonna continue on to be a great ambassador. So with that, counsel, would love to have any action on this confirmation, or comments, or questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I will make a comment, just that Tracy impressed me from when I first sat down with him before he was in the running to become our next police chief. And I really felt how genuine he was in his care for the community. And I can tell that he will really keep us with that philosophy of community policing, and that he's so forward-thinking on a lot of areas that are evolving really fast. And I'm, I'm so excited that you nominated him. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
For me, and I'll be brief, but for me, this was a no-brainer. Easy decision for sure. I've known Tracy for a while, and it, it, it's very evident and plain as day that the chief has been prepared and groomed for this role for a very long time. It's evident that he has the support from his staff and his, his, his team at the police department. I can honestly say this, as long as I've been in the public sector or even in the private sector, I can't remember a time that someone has received so much over, overwhelming support as Tracy has received for this role. I think it boils down to his, his vision and what he sees for Meridian going forward in the police department, and I'm excited to see what that looks like. I'm excited to sit down and have more conversations with Tracy about that. But ultimately, excuse me, in my, in my opinion, what strikes me the most is his family values and his love for community. So again, this is an easy decision for, for many of us, if not all of us tonight. So I'm excited to see Tracy as our next police chief here in Meridian.
Mr. Mayor.
Alson Holgland.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. Number one, I, I want to point out a compliment to the city, to you and past leaders for the city process that you've put into place for succession planning. I mean, to, to grow our leaders from within, to develop people to their full potential, and to have them now available to us and have a transition process that's smooth and, and something we, we know what we're getting and we're pleased to get. But for really that to be successful, you gotta have quality people to start with. And, and, and certainly when, I don't know how long it took for the folks in there in the police department to recognize Tracy and what he had, if it was just six months, a year, two years, to realize as a young man, he had great potential. And to develop that and to bring him along, he's an outstanding individual. He's a great leader. And as you pointed out, his philosophy of treating people with dignity and respect, no matter where they come from, is, is one that certainly is, is some all of us need to, need to follow and, and, and to, to be better at. And so in a job in law enforcement that really has just gotten tougher over the years, to have a quality leader who is, is going to do the right things, I, I know we're gonna be, be proud of Tracy. And I think it was great to, to have you recognize that as well, as you went through your process and bring him before us tonight. So kudos to you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
If I could, could jump on the, the discussion here, I, I too applaud your efforts to get Tracy here in this appointment. And Councilman Burt hit it on the head with regards to the, the amount of support that we've received. Tracy's has been a fantastic role model in our police department, will be an exceptional leader. Amongst his traits that, that I think make him and will make him extremely exceptional at the, the chief position, is his adherence to accountability, amongst other things. He holds people accountable. He holds himself accountable. It's true with, as a husband, as a father, as a friend, as a role model, as a mentor to younger officers, and now as a leader of our community, he holds all accountable, starting with self. That's a sign of a true leader. It's a sign that, that our community is certainly rallied behind him. Meridian is special in a lot of ways. And this is, tonight's a great example, when you see this overwhelming support from friends and family, all the electeds, staff, colleagues, anyone who's crossed his path knows it's the right man at the right time for this position. So hats off to you for bringing this appointment. God bless you, Tracy. We love you, and we're excited to get you to, to work as their chief.
Counsel, any further comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Alson Burt hit it on the head. It's a no-brainer. Kudos to you, Mr. Mayor and Tracy. You both did your due diligence to make sure that Tracy's the right fit for our city, which we all knew. And Tracy made sure this is the right fit for you, which we all hoped. I'm so excited to be here today. I, uh, I must have caught the Trigbert disease tonight. I first learned about Tracy when I found out I was gonna come work for the city. I, uh, my father said, oh, you're gonna work alongside Tracy. You're gonna learn a lot from him. You're gonna learn a lot about leadership. And for, for somebody that I admire so much, to have so much admiration for you, meant a lot. And here's what's awesome, is that every instance, every encounter I've had with him, you've confirmed that. Me, tonight's vote of confirmation isn't just confirming you, it's a vote for the department and a great future. And I firmly believe you could go work anywhere in the world and they'd be lucky to have you. We somehow tricked you to fall in love with us, and I'm so happy that you're here. And, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other comments, I'm happy to get the neat privilege, maybe as being the liaison, to make a motion.
Hold on for one second. Do we have any other council member that'd like to make any comments? Okay. And I think that you are good to go, Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
It is with great pleasure and pride that I move that we confirm your appointment of Tracy Bastard-Achea to serve as the Meridian Police Chief, effective immediately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
That's an easy second for me.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I think, Clark, we're gonna call a roll on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Absolutely.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Holgland.
Aye.
And Burt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Congratulations on step one of this evening. We'll do what we can to get close to the mic so that you can, your words can be heard by all. But I just want to say welcome to everyone officially, because I'm sure you're here for this purpose tonight. It's great to see some of our, obviously the department, community members, former elected officials, and others are here to support Tracy this evening. But I did want to give a special welcome to Tracy's family this evening. Special time for everybody, I know. Last thing I want to say to you, Tracy, before we do the oath, in today's role, it takes a special person to do this job, especially to be the leader of the department. And I know you, you've been preparing this for your entire career, and there's nobody better for this role, and you have my complete trust and confidence. And I hope to learn more from you than I can ever imagine, so that I can pass along to others in the city in ways. So with that, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Tracy Bastard-Achea.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Meridian.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Meridian.
That I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
That I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the policies and procedures of the Meridian Police Department.
And the policies and procedures of the Meridian Police Department.
That I will obey the lawful orders and directives of those appointed over me.
That I will obey the lawful orders and directives of those appointed over me.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge all the duties.
Faithfully discharge all of the duties.
Of the office of the chief of police.
Of the office of the chief of police.
In and for the city of Meridian, Idaho.
In and for the city of Meridian, Idaho.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The last thing that we're going to be doing, and I'd ask Tracy's family to please come forward right now, as his wife, Andy, in San Antonio, they will be doing the chief's badge at this point in time. I'd just like to say that I think it's important for us all to remember in these roles, how much of a role the family plays, you know, the sacrifices that they make on a given day for people they're willing to take on these, these roles and responsibilities. So with that, I'll let you go ahead and take it over from here. I'd like to present our fifteenth chief of police, Tracy Bastard-Achea, for some words.
Well, let's hope I can get through this. First of all, thank you, Honorable Mayor Simison, and esteemed members of the city council. It is my honor to be named the chief of police for the Meridian Police Department. I am extremely grateful for your support and guidance. I have honorably served the city of Meridian and the police department for twenty-four plus years, and it is humbling to be named the chief of police of the agency I started my career with, an agency and community I love. I will not let you down. Not to make this sound like an Academy Awards acceptance speech, but tonight really isn't about me. It's about the people who help you get to where you get. And I do have many people to thank. In this country, we like to talk about self-made men and self-made women, but I do not believe there is such a person. Each and every one of us are where we are because somebody helped us along the way, whether it was through a piece of advice, a hand up, or just believing in us. Knowing this, I want to take, I want to thank those who have helped me during my journey. First, I would like to thank the men and women of the Meridian Police Department and their families, who have worked hard to build the great relationship we have with our community and for their support they have shown me over the years. Especially want to thank the command staff, who has always been there to humble me. And next, thank you to all of my mentors in the law enforcement community, the instructors, supervisors, and just damn good cops who have helped to guide me, too many to mention for fear I will leave someone out. Former chiefs Bill Gordon, Mike Worley, Bill Musser, and Jeff Levy, who all taught and mentored me along the way. The late mayor, Robert Corey, who hired me and supported me more than he probably should have. Late council member Keith Byrd, who taught me to play the long game, how to disagree without being disagreeable, and more importantly, how to forgive. And former council member Charlie Roundtree, who taught me to be prepared and to realize when someone is asking you questions, they aren't trying to sabotage you. They are trying to get you to think, and they are trying to understand. Former Mayor Tammy DeVird, who taught me to welcome feedback and embrace Former Mayor Tammy DeVird, who taught me to welcome feedback and embrace disagreement. I would also like to thank the teachers, coaches, and mentors over the years. Especially people like, coaches like Tom Bingham. Jerry Sabala and Bob Milligan, among so many others. Countless friends, who over the years have provided wise counsel and support. I would like to thank my hometown of Gooding, who taught me about community. Most importantly, I would like to thank my family. My brothers Jeff and Rick, who have always supported and guided me, no matter what our differences may be, you will not come between the Bastarchea brothers. My niece Misty, who's like a sister to me, and has always made me feel more important than I am. I wanna thank my mom Doris and my dad Luis. I wish nothing more. Than for my mom to be here today. She hated that I was going to become a cop, but she supported my brothers and I, without question, and taught us, every person has worth. My dad, who's here today, came to this country at the age of 17 on a sheep herding contract, coming from a country where he wasn't even allowed to speak his native language in public. He taught my brothers and I what loyalty and work ethic really means. He worked six and a half to seven days a week, so we could live a better life. Most of all, I wanna say thank you and show my gratitude to my wife Andy in San Antonio. They've endured so much over my years as a police officer. Late nights, and many nights, that Andy spent sleepless, wondering if I was going to come home, especially during my days working undercover. When we met, she thought she was going to marry a teacher and a wrestling coach. Sorry about that, but thank you for your undying support throughout my career. And last, I wanna say thank you to the community for your support of our police officers. We have something special here, and just know, every decision we will make as a police department will be based around treating people with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Counsel, let's take a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 6:50 with the regular City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor. Sonia, I'm bringing up your presentation here, I'll give you control over the screen.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you so much, Chris. It shows on my end that it's showing. I'm not sure why it's not. Tell me when you'd like me to begin. Clerk, please.
So I've sent you information to take over control of the screen. You should see a pop-up and be able to take control.
Once you feel comfortable, you can go ahead and begin.
I do not see a pop-up. I'm sorry. I must be having internet issues, Chris.
Let me know when to advance. I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Go ahead in advance, please. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the public hearing on December 15th, the council continued the subject annexation request to tonight's meeting in order for the applicant to work with the neighbors, the Sings specifically, to determine landscaping that they'd be amenable to between their property and the access road, and for staff to clarify emergency access options via Chindon Boulevard with ITD. Sarah from ITD should be in attendance tonight to answer any questions council has regarding this access. Staff did verify with ITD that if an access were granted by ITD solely on the Spurwing property via Chindon with cross-access easement granted to the Wagners to the west, the Wagner's existing access via Chindon would be required to be removed, which isn't feasible at this time as Mr. Wagner does want to retain his existing access. An agreement was reached between the applicant and the Sings, signed copy of which is included in the public record. The applicant has agreed to pay the Sings a sum of $15,000, the cost of a wrought iron fence between their property and the access road, upon approval of the subject application by city council in exchange for the Sings withdrawing their objections to the application. One letter of testimony has been received since the last hearing from Greg Stock. He is requesting the annexation and emergency access road is denied for the reasons noted in his letter. Staff will turn over to the applicant at this time. Thanks.
Council, any questions for staff at this time? Okay. With that, I'll ask the applicant to please come forward. Get your name and address for the record and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario and Meridian. I'm here this evening representing the applicant on this application. I apologize that I was not, could not be in attendance on the 15th with the first public hearing. I was stuck over in the city of Star. They did have me at the first of their agenda and I had hoped to be finished there so that I could then rush to Meridian, but it didn't transpire and so the burden fell upon Mr. Freeman to obviously try to explain to the council and the mayor the history of this project. I've been working on this project for 14 years, believe it or not, the project that just keeps giving. When we initially got the project approved, it was in 2007. The recession hit and hit hard and the project, we had it all designed and it was put on hold. One of the conditions that the council had placed and the fire department upon this project was that we obtain a secondary vehicular access to the development since our single access came within, off Balada Court in Spurwing subdivision. So we made it a priority and this is the actual right-of-way permit that I submitted in 2008. My signature's on the bottom and we submitted a design for that emergency access and it was approved and it's signed on the bottom by ITD. We then proceeded to install that access. This aerial here shows, it's a 2008 aerial that came from ITD, from Shona Tonkin, and it shows that the emergency vehicle access, you can see Mr. Wagner had two existing, Mr. Wagner had two existing approaches to Chindon and here is our emergency access and we designed it and we paved it and it was finalized by ITD in 2008. Then we kind of sat and waited for the economy to improve. We came through with multiple time extensions. This particular project had five time extension, which is my all-time record. The last time extension I brought before the council, I promised that I will not come back again and give me just six months and we shall build this and record it and we did. Prior to that, in 2012, Spurwing Greens development to the west of the golf course was obviously starting and then Spurwing Challenge that was bought by the Andersons to the east of the Spurwing Golf Course and the existing Spurwing development needed to extend Meridian sewer. So my client, Jock Hewitt, provided an easement that went through our undeveloped property at the time and then went eastward to service Spurwing Greens. At that time, there was a gravel road that was constructed across our undeveloped property, which you can see here, and then they went in and installed access to the manholes that were in the golf course and the sewer came down across and then down this direction. And you can kind of see that gravel access road that went out to Balada Court. In 2014, I was contacted by Mr. Splat, who worked for District Three in right-of-way permits. He indicated that the Walmart had been approved by the city of Meridian and Ada County Highway District. One of their conditions was that they would expand and signalize the 10-mile Chindon intersection and he informed me that ITD would be extinguishing our emergency access to Chindon. And he said, "There's no way that we can retain it because it conflicts with the signal pole location." So then, this is what was built and you can see that they have, they have a single turn lane, but they've striped it for a dual-turn lane. They relocated Mr. Wagner's approach and then they removed the emergency access that we had constructed here along Chindon Boulevard. This is another picture, kind of shows you what that intersection looks like. I did, I did go to ITD when we submitted, when all of this kind of started going sideways on us. The first thing I did is I had to figure out where's my secondary access going to be. So I met with Perry Palmer, who was the fire chief at the time, and I said, "Perry, I, you know, we've got a, we've got a situation here." And he said, "Well, you, you have a sewer access and we'd extended Suez water with an additional easement going north." And he said, "You know, what about that as, as an ax, as a secondary access? Because you're required to have a all-weather gravel surface that can handle 75,000 gross vehicle weight anyway." So I did submit, I did submit plans to, these were the plans that we submitted to Mr. Palmer. We also submitted them to Public Works. We also submitted them to the planning department. They were approved by all entities and Mr. Palmer provided us this on February 17th of 2017, his approval of that emergency access. Then, when we started to construct it, then everything kind of went sideways and we got notification from Ada County that we had a stop work order because we were installing a gravel emergency access road within the county. So we had a meeting with the planning director at the time and their staff and the county attorney and I informed them, I said, "Well, you know, we've received approval from Meridian Public Works, Meridian Fire, Meridian Planning," and they said, "Well, you're not in the city of Meridian." And they said, "We have, this is on Spurwing Golf Course and we in 1994 approved that project, which had no interconnectivity to any projects, and they said, 'Therefore, you're going to have to do a traffic and development plan and a grading and drainage plan so that we can approve it.'" So we said, "Okay." So we stopped all work, didn't do anything, submitted the application, the construction plans they wanted, the staff denied us. So then we appealed to the county commissioners. We went before the county commissioners. We had significant opposition from some of the neighbors on Balada Court. Primary discussion was the interconnectivity of the paved access with the automatic gates between Spurwing Greens and Balada Court, Old Spurwing. And I kept explaining, "This, this, we have nothing to do with that. This is totally independent of that." The county commissioners, Commissioner Visser, Commissioner Kenyon, then looked at me and said, "Well, you know, if Meridian wants emergency vehicle access, they have utilities there, then you should annex into Meridian." And Commissioner Visser and Commissioner Kenyon questioned me multiple times, "Well, why can't you just go to Meridian?" And so I said, "Well, I didn't think that we would need to do this, but I guess that's an option." And so they went ahead and they denied our appeal. So that's why we're here today. We met with your staff. I submitted to the county Warren Stewart's letter, the pictures of your VAC trucks, how much they weigh, a letter from Suez, who has a water main in the same location as your sewer main. And then we also got a letter from ITD because the county transmitted to ITD. And ITD's letter is very, very informative and it basically states that there can be emergency access to Chindon with the following conditions, that one, there's only a single approach. There can't be Mr. Wagner's and an emergency access. Two, there should, has to be a cross-access agreement between the Wagner's property and the approach has to be constructed in alignment with the outside westbound turning lane so that that intersection will be in alignment. And then on the last page, they, they kind of inserted and they did specify that they eliminated our access in 2014 when PacLand for Walmart came through with their application for intersection improvements. And lastly, it said, "ITD cannot allow a second direct approach at the intersection of Chindon and 10 Mile, but we will consider the option of using a single approach." Mr. Wagner is here this evening. He was not able to attend the, the meeting on the 15th. Mr. Wagner has no intentions of developing his property at this time. He wants to just live there in the house like he and his wife and their grandson have done and he has just basically put all development plans on hold, nor does he want to move his approach or grant any cross-access for our development. What we planned on doing is, you can see in this aerial, there, that's an access to one of your manholes. So there's a base, there's ribbon curb, and that's what I was told by Chris Anderson, who, they are the tenant on the golf course and he told me they won't allow me to come across the second hole to go to Chindon. And he said, "We would prefer that you utilize and use this as a multi-use because we have a sewer easement for the city of Meridian, a water easement for Suez, and that would be also used for an emergency access." He said, "On one condition, I want ribbon curb on one, on each side of it. I want a base and then I want you to cap it with perma-bark so that it's aesthetically pleasing." So that's what our plans indicated. And one of the reasons that he gave me for not wanting any access out to Chindon was the fact that this hole here, they may want to redo it at some point in time. And so one of the things that Mr. Hewitt did is we clipped this corner of our project, which would allow for the golf course to come around and then they're, they may move this hole to a different location. And he said, "I will not have that flexibility and it would obviously degrade the quality of our golf course if you come across it. But if you stay along the side where we already have the Meridian sewer and Suez water, that would be less disruptive." So this, this is what we cut in and it's obviously over-Xed. I mean, it, it looks, it, it, when we go in and we X out for something, we, we take it down, we fill it with gravel and then it will narrow up to the 20-foot maximum. That will be utilized for maintenance for sewer and for water and for emergency vehicle access. The neighbors were concerned about pedestrians. We said at the Plan Zoning Commission, they put a condition on us, "Sign it, no access, private property." We said, "Fine." Put a gate on each end, Knox box. We said, "Fine." Tony Zhang's property is right here. He is now, Mr. Hewitt met with Tony, which the council asked him, I read through your minutes. You said, "Reach out to Mr. Zhang, see if you can come to an agreement." They have come to an agreement. You can see that there's a significant amount of vegetation there. Mr. Zhang did not want us to install the wrought iron. Instead, he wanted us to pay him so that if he chooses to install it, he can place it where he wants it. And he is no longer in opposition and he was the one that was most affected that the council obviously asked that, that we reach out to and spend a significant amount of time. Here's a copy of the gate. There was a question what that gate looks like. And then here is the letter from Mr. Bonjourno, who also asked that we construct this secondary access. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Becky, is that gate at both ends of the emergency access or just one?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, we were asked to put a gate at both ends with a Knox box.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Borton.
And Becky, to confirm, the Zhangs just wanted dough? They just wanted, they just wanted money? They're not gonna, they're not gonna have you do anything? They're not gonna...
I submitted to the public record the letter that, that they signed, both Mr. and Mrs. Zhang signed, that they, they said they, they wanted the money instead of the fence. They didn't want us to install the fence. And in my conversations with Sonya, she was concerned that if we installed the fence, where would the fence go? She didn't want any no-man's land, so that seemed to work better for the staff that then they would control where that fence went and when that fence goes up and if it goes up. But Mr. Hewitt and Mr. Zhang ended on good terms and I think, I think we have a solution here. And, and that's, that's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping that this 14-year adventure of mine ends this evening.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just one, and I don't know, maybe, I don't know who else is speaking next, but the, the paying the fee and not paying, and not putting the wrought iron fence in, the fence, I thought was intended to alleviate some of the concern and whether it's this homeowner or future homeowner of this property. homeowner, or future homeowner of this property, um, it just seems odd that a fee would be paid, and rather than actually put in the wrought iron fence, which is ultimately what was appropriate to try and remedy some of the concerns, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I, I think that question is probably better suited for Mr. Freeman, because he also had conversations with Tony Zhang. Um, and, and Mr. Freeman, I wa, I was not a part of that conversation, so I, I would defer to Mr. Freeman to answer that question.
Okay.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Strater.
Um, thank you, Becky. I was not at the meeting on December 15th, but, um, I have had time to go through the last meeting finally, and did wanna follow up, it seemed like there was a question regarding whether the police and ambulances and other responders could use the same, basically lockbox on the gate that the fire department uses. I think that was a Knox box. Is there going to be an opticon box? How does that, maybe you're not the right person, I don't know, but how do we make sure that if this was to move forward, that all emergency responders would be able to utilize this access?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, that's a, that's a good question. I, I was always under the assumption that, that the Knox box, uh, keys were available to any emergency, uh, services. Because I know, you know, there's situations may arise where, um, where the police may need to, to get access, obviously Public Works will need to get access, um, Suez will need to get access for maintenance purposes. Um, so, I'm not sure if there, if there is, is some universal, um, there is no universal. But we would be glad to, to work with, with your emergency services, you know, to, to make sure that everybody has access. Obviously, two, two ways in, two points of access into a development is what is preferred. Um, I just had this conversation with the, the Fire Chief Tominsky over in Star, and, and he is, had talked about they'd done a real poor job of interconnectivity between these older subdivisions, and how they're making efforts to try to improve interconnectivity. And he said, "In the event of even a house fire," he said, "We'll send engines from two different directions," um, you know, to, because we'll hook to different hydrants and so forth. So, you know, this is, in my opinion, a life safety issue that, uh, that we need to make sure we don't ignore. And, and that's my goal, um, is to do what's right. But, but we are, we're open to suggestions, uh, maybe, maybe Chief, you know, Mr. Bonjourno has a, a solution, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that we'd be, that's a great question, because I, now, especially if you start bringing Suez into the equation, um, I, I don't know that our Public Works Department has, um, the, I'm sorry, what is it? Literally, the emotive, emoticons? I don't know, the, opticons, I don't think that those are on Public Works, so I don't, this is gonna be a humdinger, of trying to figure out how you can get multiple people in.
Mr. Mayor?
I guess Deputy Chief.
Uh, so typically what we do for, uh, so because this is a gate, uh, we would be putting a Knox padlock on there. And typically, when you have multiple people that are trying to access a gate, what we usually do is we lock our, our padlocks together. And so that way, if I get there, I can unlock the gate and drop the chain. If Public Works gets there, they can unlock their lock and drop the chain. So their chain, they're locked together. Uh, that's one of the better ways of doing it with a gate or a, a chain, so we could just lock all of our locks together, so everybody has access. Uh, now, as far as PD goes, uh, we can work with the police department on, uh, the police department does not carry Knox keys in their vehicles. Uh, so typically, what we do is, if there is some type of an incident, we will, uh, uh, our battalion chiefs carry keys, all of our units carry keys, I carry keys, both my inspector carries keys, uh, that are locked in our vehicles, and so we can give PD a key, if there's an incident going on and they don't want us in the area. So we will give them a key, uh, they, they have the, uh, protection that they carry with them, and, and they can unlock the lock as well. Um, and then, worst-case scenario, uh, as with any lock, a, a pair of bolt cutters works great.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have two, uh, signed up in advance, first is Patricia Liddell.
If you can set your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patricia Liddell, and my business address is 6149 Meeker in Boise, 83713. Hi, Truck. Um, I am a representative for the homeowners in, um, Olive Tree. I, uh, am the community manager for those, um, homeowners that, that live there. And, uh, we tried to seek some information from the homeowners as to whether or not they were in support of this application. And I would say that, yes, I have, we, we, we don't have a fully built-out or, or occupied subdivision at this time, but we reached out to the homeowners, and I have 15 of the homes that have signed letters of support. And I wasn't sure if you want me to give that to you guys, submit it as information, or, um, but I have them here for you if you would like. So at this point, my, I, I don't have all the history, obviously, that the engineers and the legal people have, however, my question to you all is, I'm sure that you live in a subdivision, and I'm sure that your concern for your family's safety and security would be top of mind. And I believe that having a secondary access, and the homeowners believe that the secondary access is really important for their safety and security. So I would just ask that you would consider approval of this easement annexation, and that we can just move forward and, and keep those folks safe. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, if that's appropriate, but I would be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Rick Mortson, representing the Spurwing HOA. They'll correct me on that if I'm wrong.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Rick Mortson. I represent the Spurwing HOA Board, as well as the Balada Residents. I'm gonna start off with a few discussions regarding Ms. McKay's, uh, presentation. So I'm gonna jump to what was presented in December. Uh, Ms. McKay has repeatedly, over, through Ada County and through Meridian City, uh, meetings, claimed that this road has always existed, and at least in a gravel form, and that is very false. The 2007 plot map shows no existing road. Adjacent property owners in December submitted substantial photos confirming this. The satellite views provided by the developer are intended to mislead Meridian P&amp;Z and City Council. Uh, the region claimed to be a non-maintained road, it simply disturbed earth from the installation of the sewer lines. If you recall from December, this was shared, uh, you can see there on, on both photos what, uh, Ms. McKay is claiming as a previously existing road. That is simply disturbed earth from installation of the sewer lines, and from construction traffic during that installation. Um, you can see, there's also what appears to be, if that's a gravel road, there's also a gravel road running horizontal across the fairway, which we know does not exist. Again, it's disturbed earth from the installation of sewer lines. Um, moving on to Commissioner Visser. I think it's a little misleading, Ms. McKay's comments there, but here on the first main bullet, "While Ada County Commissioner Visser had suggested the developer could pursue annexation with Meridian City, it should be made clear that the Board of Ada County Commissioners was not in favor of the proposed road." He had asked during the commissioner's meeting, you know, "Why not?", but, uh, that was the extent of it, that she's referring to. In regards to the Andersons' denial of the road and its original location, I'll point you here to the first main bullet. Uh, "The Club at Spurwing has no authority on this matter as their tenants, and leased the property in 2011 with full knowledge of the planned emergency access road, uh, in that original location." Uh, jumping back to, uh, tonight's presentation, uh, the Spurwing HOA and Balada Residents have argued against the proposed road for, location for three reasons. The new proposed location imposes a significant negative impact to adjacent homeowners' property belly and quality of life. Two, a road is simply not required. Installation of the fire sprinklers in the remaining Olive Tree homes has been proposed by both Meridian P&amp;Z and the Fire Marshal's inceptible alternative solution. Developer can pursue this solution without Meridian annexation. Meridian Fire, uh, Police Chief stated during the December meeting that a secondary emergency access such as the one proposed has never been used to his knowledge. Fire sprinklers are much more practical and likely to be used, uh, versus a secondary access. Why go against Ada County's ruling, and negatively impact a lot of homeowners for a road that is simply not necessary? Um, there was a question in December, "Why do Balada Residents, uh, care if they're not, you know, the couple residents at the end of the cul-de-sac?" Well, those, uh, they, they care because of, one, number three, which I haven't gotten to, the safety concerns, but also, uh, in regards to number two, a lot of them are members of the course, and they prefer to, no road. So, no road and a fire sprinkler option, it would be the preferred, uh, uh, option from the Balada Residents. And number three, if a road is dictated by Meridian, the original 2000, 2000, 2007, 2008 approved emergency access location is still the safest, least redundant, and quickest approach. With the pending home sale of the adjacent resident, number one is less of an issue. I notice that Ms. McKay completely left that piece of, uh, fact out, that the, the resident is selling, that's why he has signed and agreed to the road. However, the HOA has not changed its stance regarding its recommendation against the proposal for the reasons above. The Zings have agreed to a new road location only because they are fed up with the current situation, have decided to move a few blocks away. They're not moving due to job or relocation, they're moving a few blocks away because of this catastrophe here that's happened. If they're, if they were not moving, they would still be steadfast against the proposal. Developer has negatively impacted the Zings and all Balada Residents with the relocation, repurposing of a previously emergency access road that now generates 500 to 600 cars a day, down the once-quiet Balada cul-de-sac. And there's more information in the exhibits, and Ms. McKay touched on that, a lot of the Balada Residents don't trust this developer, you won't do the same with this other road, but it's kinda besides the point, but this is why the Zings are fed up. And for the past one and a half years, on top of that already injury, more salt in the wound, they've been tormented with the negative impact of this new road, constructed along their property line, that was relocated and constructed by the same developer without permit. It's obvious the developer thought it would be easier to ask for forgiveness versus permission at the expense of the Zings' quality of life. The Zings had to relocate one of their dogs, deal with continuous foot and bike traffic, and live with an eyesore deteriorate, deteriorated view of the golf course for the past one and a half years. Ada County, after a very thorough investigation into the matter, ruled against the new road, but Meridian Planning and Zoning rushed a developer's rescue with a rubber-stamp staff report recommendation, based solely on the developer's narrative, with several incorrect facts and assumptions. It's no surprise the residents have had enough. This is Ada County's documentation and research, there's eight pages per page here, there's a lot of research they put into this, and, uh, very little that, for what I can tell, was referenced by, uh, the P&amp;Z staff. Throughout this process, developer has manipulated the system, and his actions should not be rewarded when alternate solutions do exist. In regards to the Meridian staff claims, the staff report claims that it's due to the county's denial of the site modification and the city's requirement for an access to maintain the public utility, is the reason why they support this request. Ada County has already demanded with pending litigation, that the sewer access stub roads be reinstalled to satisfy public utility access. And by the way, that won't require any lockboxes, knockboxes, or octagon locks, et cetera. A continuous road is not necessary, nor required for utility access as detailed in the December presentation. The staff also claimed that due to the 10-mile Chindon, uh, road improvements, uh, that the intersection, uh, you know, to that intersection, it now necessitates an alternative location. As shown in Exhibits Three and Four, shown in December, the original proposed location is still viable, and this was confirmed by ITD in December 2019, the developer has simply chosen not to pursue this option. An alternate location is not even necessary. Staff states that the developer can pursue fire sprinklers in additional homes, and this option does not require annexation. In summary, Ada County has been very clear that the new proposed road location would be injurious and a nuisance to adjacent property owners. While the most impacted resident has lost hope and decided to move, the new proposed location is still not the logical safest location, and still impacts, albeit, although to a lesser degree, adjacent residents, uh, such as the clients that reside exactly opposite the cul-de-sac from the Zings. Uh, they look out their front door and can see this road and the gate where it would reside, and where it connects to Balada. Continuous road is not required for sewer and water access. Ada County is pending litigation, forcing the developer to restore the original stub roads, no action needs to be taken by Meridian to restore sewer-water maintenance access. Original 2007 proposed and approved emergency access location is the safest, least redundant, and quickest approach. The current approach uses 60% of the entryway of the, uh, primary access. And it passes by the Club at Spurwing, which is your most likely choke, most likely choke point for any traffic issues, or for emergency vehicles to get through there. An alternate solution has been proposed by Meridian Planning and Zoning with Fire Marshal approval, involving the installation of fire sprinklers in the remaining Olive Tree homes. A lot of residents support this solution to the problem. Annexation's not required for this option, nor should it proceed until developer returns the land back to its original state, as demanded by Ada County. Please do not allow the developer to circumvent Ada County's decision and ruling on this matter. And, uh, it's been brought up several times about the traffic, and this is a typical scene during rush peak hours of the traffic. This is taken from the front yard of the Zings. This is unrelated to this particular, um, request, I understand that, but you gotta understand, this is why they're fed up. This developer is now routing 500 to 600 cars a day past the Zings' house, and then on top of that, they've had to live a year and a half with a partially constructed road, uh, which was put in without permit, and they're just tired of fighting on this. I don't have anything further tonight, um, I'm open for questions or available to go into more detail.
Thank you. For the record, could you set your address?
3028 West Balada Court.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pro.
Thank you for being here this evening, I, I'm just curious your thoughts on, in this presentation, um, as well as the one from December, what, well, we now know that ITD has for sure confirmed that they are not comfortable with two accesses, so, um, it, it seems like that option is taken off the table. I'm wondering if you could share your thoughts on that?
Um, there was a, I got two thoughts on that. There was a question in, from a council member in December, about whether or not the Wagner's had a secondary access, and if, uh, it would be landlocked. They do have a secondary access, Ms. McKay showed that, though it's, I'm not completely clear, I don't know what ITD's rights are, if they can mandate a, uh, you know, force a particular solution there, but that's up to ITD. But it, it should be noted that there is a secondary access on to Chindon from the Wagner property. If, if that is not a solution, again, uh, you know, I think our primary focus is that, uh, the fire sprinklers is the win-win solution for all. If that is not a solution, again, you know, I think our primary focus is that the fire sprinklers is the win-win solution for all. The Andersons are happy they don't have a road going across the golf course where Ms. McKay pointed out. The property owners aren't impacted that are going to move into the Zings' residence. The golfers don't have to deal with the road on either side. And to be honest, the sprinklers are more likely to be used than that secondary access anyway, and come in more useful.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I definitely get the impression that there's a deep trust issue because of what happened with a previous emergency access. Is there anything, you know, for example, if we were to specify that this is emergency access or put it in a development agreement, is there anything that would help give, you know, your HOA comfort that that will not be the case here? That was a different situation, but it feels like there's just a mistrust or a real concern. You know, would that help overcome that concern?
There's, there's absolutely a mistrust there. You know, the developer has proposed as much as possible, you know, in regards to it's going to be gated, it's not going to be ever converted in the future to through traffic. I don't know what more can be asked, but you're right, there is a distrust. I mean, that road was put in, again, with assistance of Ada County and Meridian City for that matter. If you look at the Meridian City zoning commission report, it says that that road is not intended for through traffic, but yet we have five to 600 cars a day, a car every minute and a half from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM drives by the residents on that dead-end cul-de-sac. That's ACHD Traffic Studies.
Counsel, any additional questions for? Councilman Cameron.
Rick, just curious if you and the applicant had any communication after that December meeting? They reach out to you, you reach out to them, anyway, shape or form?
No shape or form. They did reach out, as Ms. McKay said, to the Zings regarding landscape, but that was it.
And counsel, we do have ITD on as well, if anyone would like to direct any questions to them. This is a public hearing. We've gone through those that have all signed up at this point in time. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and provide testimony, you can do so now. Or if we have anybody, I guess we just, the only person we have is ITD from the public that's present. And no one.
Hello?
Yes, Sarah, would you like to provide testimony?
Um, just to clarify that the previous presentation from the HOA stated that that was still amenable. Hello?
Sarah, if you could say your name and address before you speak.
Oh, yes, Sarah Arhona. I am representative of Idaho Transportation Department. I live in Boise, so 10370 West Landmark Court.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to be available to the council in case they had questions for clarification. ITD does not have the right to take away the access from the Wagner's. Unless, you know, unless they go to develop, there's no reason for them to come into compliance with the new rules because they were previously approved under different circumstances and different rules since before 2012. So, as far as the emergency access, ITD, like I said earlier, would be willing to consider a single approach to line up with the intersection. And was also stated earlier that a cross-access agreement could not be arranged, so. Just, any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I don't know why my video isn't working. I apologize for that. Sarah, I'm curious, it seems to me like we wouldn't be here having this conversation if the original emergency access wasn't removed when, when that intersection was, was improved. So I'm just, I guess, please help me understand, this is obviously not my field, how it was permissible to remove that emergency access but not to now remove the Wagner. She said that they are under a different set of circumstances, but if you're able to share any of that history with us or how it was possible to remove the original emergency access with the intersection improvement without approval or agreement from the landowner at that time?
Sarah, are you there?
I'm sorry, it was muted. So, the Walmart project expanded the 10-mile intersection, and both approaches as existing could not stay in their original configurations at that point for safety reasons. So during the project, they had agreed upon, so in the plan set, there is shown an approach where it was rebuilt that was supposed to be a shared approach. I can't tell you what circumstances caused it not to go through. There should have been an agreement there. Our understanding was that it was meant to be shared for both uses, essentially. So at this point in time, ITD cannot make them give a cross-access agreement. Again, this was determined during the project process, and those considerations were taken in. I'm sorry, I don't have the background of that particular project.
Counsel, any further questions? Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony at this time? Say your name and address for the record, please.
3240 West Chenden, Meridian. I just want to reiterate that I have no plans to do any development at this time, and I do not want to give up any of my too small, two acres that I have, and then I'm just going to stay there just like it is. Just want to state that again. I've stated it in the last three hearings. And I don't think this project has anything to do with my property, so. And then I, just if you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for being here this evening. I'm curious if you were under the same understanding as what Sarah just shared, which was that there originally wasn't intend for there to be a shared access. At the time that the, the access was removed with the improvement of the intersection, she said she wasn't able to to really give us some history on why that intended shared access agreement never came to be. I thought you might be able to, to share some history for us.
Try that again. What are you asking exactly? Because they moved my, my driveway over. They only need, they can only have one because of the safety issue. My driveway was in that intersection. And that's why they moved it over, as far as I can remember.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Um, I, Mr. Wagner, did you have the opportunity to hear what Sarah from Idaho Transportation Department just shared with us right before you came up to the, did you hear her say that she was of the understanding that there was intended to be a shared access agreement with, with the applicant, with the developers, and you to share that emergency access, and she wasn't sure why that never came to be?
I don't, I'd never accepted any agreement like that. I don't think there's one exists.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, thank you. If anyone else would like to provide testimony at this time? If not, I'd ask the applicant to come forward for final comments.
Members of the council, Becky McKay, Mr. Freeman would like to say a couple words, too. I just want to reiterate to the council, I've been becoming, coming before this body for 28 years now. You know, these county subdivisions that were done in the 90s, they always seem to come back to haunt us due to their lack of interconnectivity, lack of services. All those lots are on septic systems. My husband in 1994 built Spurwing subdivision. He built the golf course, McKay Construction. He was also a founding member of the golf course. So I'm fully aware of all the history that transpired, and there was no interconnectivity. It was just dead-end cul-de-sacs that ended, and then there was emergency access easements on the old plat between the two cul-de-sacs. An opportunity when Spurwing Greens came in was provided to get some interconnectivity and secondary access. Obviously, it has changed Balada Court, but that is independent of my project. I am not putting any trips onto that interconnectivity between Spurwing Greens and Balada Court. Mr. Mortensen says, let's just sprinkle those houses. We already have 30 homes that are constructed. They are not sprinkled. What if they catch fire? What if there is, necessitates a second engine coming in from a second direction? That could be problematic. And this body has always looked at, one, protecting the city of Meridian and its citizens, two, protecting its utilities. I have an email here dated July 8th from 2020 from Bruce Freckleton to my civil engineer on this project, and it says, "Let's make sure that the required compacted gravel access road over the sewer main is in place, please." That's what this email says. I have never, ever had a project in the city of Meridian where I had your sewer facilities and water facilities outside of public right-of-way that I did not construct a all-weather surface gravel access, nor have I ever had a project that had more than 30 lots that did not have a secondary access. Mr. Mortensen, you know, he, he claims, well, there was never any gravel in between the two manholes. I got the information from Chris Anderson with Sundance Company, whose contractor put it in. He indicated to me that there was gravel there, and it just sank down into the mud. All we're trying to do is, we're trying to solve a life safety issue and, at the same time, make sure there's adequate access to your sewer and Suez's water facilities, which is what we do on every project. And this could be precedent-setting. Hey, don't need, don't need them. Don't need a gravel access over the sewer and water. You know, they'll, Public Works will have to get four-wheel drives and, you know, and Warren's comment to me was, you know, we get one of those back trucks stuck, we got a big problem. We're going to have to get a huge wrecker to get it out. So, you know, this is important, and the county did not understand that. The county commissioners don't do sewer, they don't do water. They had no grasp of this, and it was very obvious. Commissioner Lochando says, "I have no idea what you're talking about and no understanding. I'm just voting no because staff recommended no." And Commissioner Visser and Commissioner Kenyon said, "This is a Meridian problem. This is a Meridian subdivision. This is Meridian sewer, Meridian secondary access annexed to Meridian. We're just going to deny you. You can go to Meridian." So we're doing exactly what they've instructed us to do. We're not trying to circumvent any rules. We got all of our approvals that we thought we needed to have until we received a stop work from Ada County. And I talked to Warren, and he says, "We have sewer and water running through Ada County outside city limits all over. We've never been required to get a permit or get a grading, or a traffic and development plan or a grading and drainage plan." I mean, you know, this, this blindsided us. This is not misrepresentation. This is not something where we're in the middle of the night building this facility. We were doing what we were told to do by the Public Works Department, the planning, and the Fire Department. And I hope that the council supports their staff.
Mayor, counsel, Mark Freeman, Foley and Freeman Attorneys, attorney for the applicant, 953 South Industry Way in Meridian. Thank you for your attention this evening. Try to make it quick. Mr. Borton, or Councilman Borton, asked a question earlier about the applicant. We are definitely not hiding the fact that the applicant's house is for sale, and apparently he's located another buyer. I, most of the communications with the applicant were via me and the applicant, Mr. Singh, Tony Singh, speaking on the phone. We had several, numerous conversations. We got to go back a little bit on the history. How'd the fence come up? Well, the fence came up because at some point in time, Tony Singh asked Mr. Hewitt during a phone call, "You got to give me something. How about, how about a fence? Will you pay for a fence?" That's where the fence started. We put the, so that's where the fence came from. The landscaping came from what we thought, I think it was a mistaken impression, that that's what people wanted. So, in one of Becky's updated, or actually Jock got a landscape plan from someone, they updated it, they put some landscaping in. And then we heard from the neighbors, "Oh, well, we don't want that landscaping. It obstructs our view of the golf course." So, I spoke with Mr. Singh. He made the offer. He, he is representative to me that he's making the offer not just for himself, but for the future owner of that parcel, and that they are going to use the funds that, that my client agreed to play upon approval to resolve the issues of the fence and the location of that easement. So, my understanding from what Mr. Singh represented to me is that, that the new owner is not going to come in and be shocked that there's an emergency access there, that these funds, somehow they've negotiated that or they've worked that out. So, I think we have the, we have the approval and no objections from the person who is the most affected by the project. I wanted to make that point, point first. I, I don't have a lot of points to make. Mr. Mortensen may not know, he made a statement that there's been no effort to contact him. That may be correct. But my client, my client's president, Mr. Jock Hewitt, made an attempt, reached out, left a voice message for the actual president of the homeowners association, who is Eric Epperson. He's the board of the Spurwing HOA, never received a return call. So it wasn't that, that we just ignored the Spurwing board. My client called the president and said, "Hey, I, I'm supposed to talk to you. I'm happy to talk to you," and never received a return call back. I think the point's been probably beat, beat in well enough to everybody that these, some of the neighbors on Balada have, have, maybe a legit, they have a legitimate right to complain about whatever they want, but they are upset about the traffic on their court. And that's not this applicant. It's not Mr. Hewitt. That's the, that's the development over at Spurwing Greens and that connectivity issue. That's a total different issue. We've been saying that all along. I know they're upset about that. I respect that, but that's not why we're here. This emergency access is going to be restricted. It will only be emergency access. It's never intended to be a, any kind of public access. And we've had testimony at various times that people had to move, or they, they, there were dogs and people walking through. Well, there's no gates. There's no gates on it. It was just a field and, and a road that sort of went through it. Anybody could walk it. When this is done, there's going to be at least two gates. When this is done, there's going to be at least two gates. My understanding that there was going to be, there are going to be three gates that at the, at the location, at the cul-de-sac in Olive Tree, my client didn't want vehicles like pull in the emergency access even before it gets to the Knox Gate. And so he's going to install an extra gate there. So there's actually three gates. It's a golf course, it's not public property. People get thrown off the golf course all the time for walking on the golf course at this location or other locations. They're never supposed to be on unless they're playing golf. So it's never permissible for anybody to ride a bike on the golf course, walk through the golf course. You can't do that, it's not allowed. And this is no different. But the point is, this will never be used for anything other than emergency vehicles. And I guess my final point is, if I can wrap this up really quick. Fire suppression devices, like Becky said, really aren't an option. These people that bought homes in Spurwing or in Olive Tree, they bought into a subdivision that had an emergency access and it doesn't have one. And even if we sprinkler the remaining homes, there is no secondary emergency access. Some of the opposition is, well, everybody's going to drive in off a Spurwing road or whatever that main entrance to the Spurwing is. But if that road's blocked, how do we get here through the emergency access? We come in through Meridian Greens. And I think it's important to know that. So there is a valid, there are other ways to get into the property if you allow this emergency access. And I'll stand for questions if you have them.
Thank you.
If I could just say one last word.
Really quick.
Visually, what we're doing is going, when it's finished, will look exactly like what you see on the screen there. That's the access to the manhole. That is the perma-bark cap with the ribbon curb on each side. So it's not going to look any different than what's there and over on the west side. It's going to be identical aesthetically.
Counsel, any further, or any last questions? The applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I could ask a question of fire. If you find yours available.
He's here and ready.
Hi, Joe. So in the, in the door number two option of fire sprinklers, when a project such as this goes ahead and constructs 20 some odd homes before you get to that fork in the road, how is fire sprinklers an option? In that, does it apply only to the homes 31 and on? Or do you have to go back and retrofit the first 30 homes as well?
No, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, we can't go make them go back and sprinkler the houses that are already built. That's a done deal. So what we could shoot for from this point forward is, anything that gets built from this point forward, we'll have to have fire sprinklers in it. Again, it's not ideal, but it will at least give us that advantage if there is a fire in one of those homes that the sprinkler system's going to do its job and keep the fire in check until we can get there. So that's, that will help.
Mr. Mayor.
If I could follow up with a sideways question, the hypothetical. If this would have been approved for 50 homes with no secondary access, but all 50 of homes had been required sprinklers as an option or only 20 of the 50, if this is a brand-new other application?
If we can get it ahead of time, I think it would depend on water supply and how the subdivision's laid out. You know, what's the distance that we would have to go? Honestly, I'd have to look at it. Typically, what we try and do is, you know, if we need to, the whole thing should be sprinkled. If, but again, it's going to depend on what's our travel time to get there. If it's, if we're outside of our five-minute goal, then the best option is going to be to sprinkler the whole thing. But we have had some areas where we've had some offshoots, you know, from the main sub and I've told them, if you go ahead and just fire sprinkler that little offshoot will be good because that way, the extra time it's going to take to get to that area, the sprinkler system should do its job and keep the fire in check.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schrader.
Question for Bill Neri. I'm not sure we would normally do this, but, and it's a totally different situation. So the folks at Balada Court had an unfortunate situation with an emergency access road that was totally different than this. But is there anything we could do as the easement holder that would help assure them that this will remain an emergency access road in perpetuity? And is there anything we can legally do that would give them some extra assurance that this will not turn into a new thoroughfare next to their home?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Schrader. Yes, so this would be part of, since it would be an annexation, we have a development agreement that would require that. We would put in language that this could only be used as an emergency access road. It would be required to put the gates in and the locks in. And then we have between, whether it's a de-annexation, which is the ultimate hammer of de-annexing the property out of the city if they won't comply. Secondarily, planning has to approve any additional buildings or anything related to the subdivision. So if, for example, the 32nd house they want to build and they still haven't put the gates in, they won't issue permits. So they won't be able to build out the subdivision without turning this into what they're proposing. If they were, for example, to build out the remainder homes and somehow, for some bizarre reason, they took out the gates because of, for whatever reason, we could sue them to enforce the contract of their development agreement. So we do not sleep on these things. So when people raise to us the concerns about how the development agreement is not being followed or how they're not compliant, whether it's landscaping, whether it's parking, whether it's, whether it's this gates access, yeah, we have code enforcement, we have planning and we can sue them. And so we definitely have the legal resources to assure the residents that that is what's intended here, that's what it will be. So I don't know how to give them more comfort level. I recognize there's a trust issue here because of the other one and that wasn't what was anticipated at that time. But here, it's clear, this has to be pretty concrete on what this agreement says and we will have the tools to enforce it if needed.
Perfect, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Kind of closed the loop with planning staff. Was there any condition within your staff report, I'm looking at now, that, at least updated as of today, that you believed remained unresolved going into today's hearing, that you needed specific direction on?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, counsel, I don't believe so. The updated staff report included conditions for gates at each end that meet the fire department requirements, signage to be installed stating that public access is prohibited beyond the gated area. So unless there's any other items council would like included, that's what's currently in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Sorry, maybe this is a silly question for Sonia, but would the DA include the language that Mr. Neri just talked about? So that specific language that it would only be used as emergency access? So that would be very clear.
I'm just looking at the wording right now. We can certainly state that to be absolutely clear.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can work with planning to make sure that's written in there.
We could, we could actually change DA provision 1B that says signage shall be provided stating that public access is prohibited beyond the gated area and then just add to that that it's for emergency access only if that's what's desired by counsel. I should add, and for maintenance by Public Works of the sewer. Thank you.
And water.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel, any discussion? Or obtain a motion to close the public hearing? Or we can take a recess, if people like a recess.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
This question would be toward the applicant before we close the public hearing. If I could just have someone from the representation, that's representing the applicant, answer this question in regard to, if someone could just walk me through the process of why the applicant or the, Mr. Hewitt decided to start building that road without any type of permit or any type of permission or, if that can just be clarified and help me understand, give some clarity to that issue.
Mayor, Councilwoman Burt. We submitted construction plans to Public Works, Meridian Public Works, Planning Department and the Fire Department for the off-site emergency access sewer and water maintenance roadway. Those plans were approved. We pre-conged the project with the city of Meridian and Ada County Highway District. And therefore, we had the approvals and they'd approved the specifications with the gates. And so our construction was approved by the entity in which we thought we needed approval from.
My next question is to staff. Why would we give approvals to something like this when it's not even part of our city? I understand that our, you know, someone could just clarify that for me as well.
Mr. Simmison, Commissioner Burt, since the city of Meridian had a sewer easement, part of that easement document talks about maintenance, providing an all-weather surface access, that the city has the right to go in there or have work done. There are instances where, and Mr. Hewitt owns the golf course. The Andersons have the lease on the golf course. We had obtained approval, obviously, Mr. Hewitt had given his approval since he's the developer and we had met with Chris Anderson, who is the lease or, and he had given approval. So we thought we had obtained approval from all entities, your fire department, everyone, to construct. It was not until someone complained to the county that we were, we had started that roadway, that then we received a stop work. I've never encountered this issue and I asked Warren Stewart, I said, "Have you ever, have you ever been stopped from installing an emergency access or a maintenance roadway over your sewer and water outside the city limits in the county? Have you ever gotten a permit from Ada County?" He said, "No, never." It's our sewer, it's our sewer easement. We have the right to make any improvements in there that we see fit for proper maintenance. So it's not like we intentionally violated the rules. We thought we had all the necessary approvals.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Can you, when this was brought to your attention, what was the communication with the planning department? I appreciate your communication with Warren, but if this all went through the Meridian Planning Department.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you've been doing this a lot longer than I have. If I get a call from the county saying, "Hey, you're building on our land," I would be going to the city saying, "Why'd you give me approval?" And it's not about blaming anybody, but if a mistake occurred, I think that's the piece that I have struggled to wrap my head around with is how y'all who do this all the time are the experts, thought you were okay to go do it. And that's the piece that might help me is how the city responded when you brought this to their attention.
Yeah. Mayor Simmison, Councilwoman Cavanagh. We went all through the city approvals, I guess not knowing that we needed any other, the city did not indicate that we needed to pursue any approvals at the county. And since that was an existing sewer line that had been there since 2012 and here we were in 2020 installing it as per the requirements of Public Works for an all-weather maintenance roadway. I mean, I have never encountered, this is the first time I've ever had sewer that ran outside the city limits. And we thought that we had all the necessary approvals from the city. No one raised any red flag and said, "Go to the county." But once we were stopped, then we went and I contacted your Public Works Department.
What about our planning department?
Contacted planning.
And what was their response? That's the piece that I'm.
They were shocked. They said, "Why would the county care? That it's our sewer facilities, it's our emergency vehicle access. Their sewer has water." And I said, "Well, obviously, they're upset about it and they want us to go through this permitting process." And that's when Mr. Stewart indicated to me, "We have sewer outside city limits all over Ada County and I have never, ever been required to obtain a permit or permission from the county."
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Question for Sonia. Sonia, any insight you can give us on this? I mean, what's the scenario that plays out where the city approves construction of a road that's not land that's been annexed into the city?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, counsel. I really honestly don't know what planning's role was in this. Planning shouldn't be approving a Public Works access road. There may have been discussions over my head with management that I'm not aware of, but I personally was not involved in any approvals on this.
Maybe, Mr. Neri, from your perspective and knowledge, any insight, even moving forward in the future? Should we be obtaining permits from the county or installation of our works and what goes on top?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I haven't, I didn't speak to county attorneys about that particular issue. And Mr. Dolby is on the call, too. I mean, he may have some insight from Public Works. But I would agree with Becky, I've never heard of this before. I mean, again, it may be land in the county, but this is private property. This is an access road, it's not a public road. It's a limited-use road and the property owner gave permission to install it. So I don't know if Mr. Hewitt did this road himself, he has to go get a permit. I don't know what the county requires if you're going to pave a road on your own property and whether they require that. So how they got involved with it, I understand they chose to be involved with it, but I'm not certain what the rationale is because, again, it's not a public road. I mean, they even had ACHD look at it to make sure. But, again, it's not a public road, it's a limited road, it's really essentially a driveway for manholes. So I've never seen it either, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cavanagh, Mr. Neri's correct. I live on Five Acres in Ada County and I can go build a gravel road in my pasture or I, we have a paved. driveway that goes to our barn. No permitting is required under the Ada County code. None whatsoever, because it's a, it's a, it's an improvement on private property. I'm, I'm.
I guess, Mr. Mayor.
So yeah, this, this is a unique situation.
It is.
Very, very strange.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, question then for Mr. Neri or for the planning staff is Ms. McKay's provided testimony that the city approved, the Planning Department approved this this plan. And so I'm trying to, again, wrap my head around what plan the city approved and how we approved a plan that allowed for construction to occur on land that has not been annexed into the city. What was the approval? Who gave it? And what was the justification? I mean, and I think that may be a question for another day. I think that is separate from this. But that, again, we all have, it's not about casting blame on anyone. But I somewhat feel like at least this element of the trust that we've heard from Rick and the Homer Association, if the city would have said, well, this isn't our call to make, you need to go to the county, this would have resolved 97% of what we've been talking about for the past four hours over the past two months. So that's, that's a piece that I would like to get to the bottom of, whether that's tonight or in the future. Because I don't think it's fair to the residents, I don't think it's fair to the applicant in the council that we're playing referee with the county on this.
Yeah, Council Cavner, the approved plans were part of my PowerPoint. They are signed and approved by Meridian Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer part of what the staff is evaluating because we do engage with that occasionally. Is there, they're approving location, not the ownership, not the ownership, you have to get ownership to access the property. There's just approving that the roadway meets the standards for the fire truck. You're meaning that it meets the standards for the VAC truck for Public Works, it meets those construction standards is what they're approving. So if, for example, they trespassed to do this, we didn't approve them to trespass on some property. That's on them. That's their, that's their responsibility. Again, we would have been unaware that the county decided that a permit was required because generally permitting is not required in the county to construct a driveway. And that's really all this is. But that's again, that's on the applicant. We're not consenting to them building in the county. We're saying this is what's needed to protect our easement. Yes, you can build that. Again, you go get approval to build it. And I think all Mr. Kay's saying is they were not aware because the county normally doesn't require permits.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Becky, I have a question about prior to actually making the improvements, were any of the neighbors contacted and given notice? I know it might not have been officially required by any government entity, but I'm just wondering if there was a courtesy given to them.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pearl, to my knowledge, I do not believe they were contacted.
Becky, can you speak up?
Oh, sorry. To my knowledge, I do not believe that they were contacted.
Mr. Mayor, Becky, you won't be able to change the screen because it's mine, not that one. That one's logged out. So if you let me know what you need to bring up, I can.
Go to the construction plans. Those are the approved construction plans that you see. So we showed, if you, if you look, we show the emergency access road coming out the back of Crantini Place. Oh, I don't have control over it. No wonder. So you can see that it was shown on the plan and then it was shown in the cut sheet next to the plan going up and then connecting to to the paved drive that goes between.
Becky, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, you can show that there was two, there were two sheets, one, one that showed it going up and connecting to to the paved access between Balada Court and Spurwing Greens. And then the other cut sheet showed it coming out of Crantini Court. These plans were reviewed by Public Works. They were submitted with our final plat. I mean, I thought we had covered all our bases. I'd had conversations with fire, Public Works and Planning to discuss this this change in order to meet my condition of approval for secondary access. And had I known, I mean, like I said, I, I had no idea that such a firestorm would be started by this. All I want to do is solve the problem and and move on. 14 years is a long time on one project.
So we can maybe close this out just a little bit. Mr. Dolbsby, if you're going to unmute yourself, to your knowledge, do you, does the city traditionally need permits from the county when we install our infrastructure? How does that work? What's that relationship look like?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think Mr. Neri put it very well when he said we don't need permits typically to put the sewer out in the county. Subdivisions routinely construct off-site sewer improvements to serve their subdivisions. And I'm not aware of any permits to get from the county to do such. We require easements, as has been stated several times during the hearing, to construct the sewer, we also need access, especially to manholes. Prefer gravel access road over the whole thing, but we had negotiated access as is shown here. So we can at least get to our manholes with the back truck. But I have not, I'm not aware of any permits that we've had to acquire from the county to do any of these activities in the past.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Tom Borton.
Maybe a question for Clint or Bill as we wrap this up. If in fact, the the sewer easement and the maintenance road rights that come with a sewer easement are of sufficient scope to also include a roadway that would serve as an emergency access and the easement rights themselves confer both the ability to construct both. It sounds like that's what the applicant believes is true. And if that's the case, why are we needing to annex this property at all? Why wouldn't the applicant just merely proceed with what they believe to be their existing easement rights and continue to construct what they believe they have an existing right to do? And utilize this, this access road as an emergency access? It feels as though, even though it might not be the intent, that there's, there's blame that's being placed upon the city as though this is somehow our fault or we led them down this path. And it's probably not the intent, but it's sure what it feels like. And that's why I think we're all struggling with this. But if in fact, the applicant thinks that they can utilize this for emergency access and the county is therefore wrong to deny it or interfere with it and go prevail in court and continue to build what you think you can already build and you don't need to annex it. You only need to annex it if you need a right that you don't already have. So this got really sideways and now I'm confused with what appears to be some cross positions.
Mayor, members of the council, my recollection is, is that emergency access, that Chaimoff of Chindon was a service road that existed at the time. It was actually the link to Olive Tree to the city. It was the only connecting point to the city of Meridian at that point in time was that road. So that was the basis of the annexation. So Ms. McKay's correct. I mean, they had that right to have an emergency access. I think, Mr. Borton, your question is what the basis of the lawsuit that's pending is about. Because again, I'm not certain what the county's interest is here and whether or not they actually have the right they're claiming they have. Obviously, there's a difference of opinion that's ongoing about that. Again, they don't normally require permitting. This is not a public roadway. It is just essentially a driveway for emergency access and some utility access. I don't disagree with you that they could prevail and that this is a, this is a way to avoid that issue if the city so chooses to do that. It does provide some city needs and that's kind of the reason, I think, why the staff and Public Works were supportive of the application because again, it erases the concern we have of access to both the utilities and emergencies. It doesn't, there's no question any longer with that. If, if, say, to play out your scenario that goes to a lawsuit, it prevails that the county does have the right to do that and prohibit the access there. And there is issues about how the access could be used. Maybe there is some ability to get there for utilities, maybe not the same level for emergencies. We may have this issue again in the future. So I think the intent here is to simply get this resolved now, get these accesses cleaned up, cleared up. There's no question where they, what they're used for. And I think the concessions are the reason Public Works and Planning were supportive because the limitations that are being placed on it with the gates. So that it's clear, no one else is going to use this. It won't be abused as it was on the Balada Court issue with the Spurring West or Spurring Greens. And so I think that's really the answer. So you're not wrong. I mean, if we deny this, that lawsuit will have to play itself out and they'll have to figure out whether or not they have that right. So that really is a question for another day. But but you're not incorrect in that analysis that there is another option. But I think the staff would like to not have this sort of in limbo and that's the reason they were supportive of the request.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
To kind of close out that thought in in maybe this, this application discussion. So I go down that path, I didn't contemplate that our sewer easement and the the maintenance road rights that go along with it also would be of such a degree that it could be utilized as an emergency access. I thought that that would be a larger, more intense use and scope that a mere maintenance road access wouldn't contemplate. And that is what necessitated this application, which that may be the case. Maybe it's not now, but but that's what I believe to be true, which then makes sense why they need to annex to get this additional right to construct something they couldn't otherwise construct. So if they go to the county, if they have that fight with the county and they win with an existing right to to build the access road with, as part of this easement, then it gets built. And if they lose, then they come back to the city and do what we're doing now, request annex to gain the right they didn't have to build an access road. So we're back here either way addressing a road getting built as an emergency access. So the choices today are this emergency access is going to be constructed or you're going to require the remaining homes to be sprinkled. And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, and Joe framed it, Councilman Borton framed it very well, but and I have issue with, okay, we require the remaining homes to be sprinkled. That leaves nearly 30 homes without sprinklers and adequate emergency access, which we require for our community. And and that's where the rub is for me on not providing that access. So it's you know, one of those things that, you know, Deputy Chief Bonjorno talked about. You know, the sprinklers buy time and that sort of thing, but what about the ones, what if it's not that house with the sprinkler that catches fire? There is no time to be bought. So other, other options have been brought forward, the access coming off 10 Mile that no longer exists, Mr. Wagner refused. And that is certainly within his right to do so. So that is, that is not a possibility. We have a utility and Suez has a utility that we require certain standards to be met for how that's covered, how it can be accessed, how a large truck can go over the top. And it's, to me, there might be a little difference in weight, but I bet you there a fire truck or an engine would be close to what the sewer truck is. So making sure that is adequate to have that emergency access is a small leap to say, hey, you bump up the standards with another half inch and we're fine running a fire truck on it. So it's, I do agree with Mr. Borton too, that we may have been presented a problem that isn't our problem and now we're called upon to solve it. But as Councilman Borton points out, once again, that either way, it's going to come back to the council for resolution. So I'm in favor of taking action tonight and moving forward. We can do analysis on the issues and permits and our processes to determine how we do this in the future, to see if there's going to be issues or if we need to change some things or have conversations with the county. But but I'm for making sure we can move ahead, protect our assets and provide access and meet the standards that we require in our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
If I'm remembering correctly, last, on the 15th of December, when we had this discussion last, I believe that, I don't remember if it was someone from Planning or if it was someone from Public Works, they said that ultimately, they could because of the easement, they maybe it was Public Works. I think it was maybe Warren that said this. Yeah, it was Warren, said that they, they could have, they ultimately don't need you know, that what is being requested from the applicant to you know, hypothetically fix potential problems with our assets and our utilities that are within that easement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cameron.
Councilman Burton's correct. Warren testified that they are able to serve our current sewer needs as is. So whether there was an action taken last week or tonight, they're in a position that they can serve the sewer. Because I think the vast majority of our conversation last month really gravitated towards the emergency access piece because at least the bulk of us had felt satisfied the sewer access question had been addressed. What is, you're correct, Councilman Burton.
Yeah, we're ultimately discussing a secondary emergency access that we hope will never have to be used ever. Ever. Because, you know, it would take something happening pretty dire at that exact intersection all by a need other places.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I was, I was there last time and I'm still there. I agree with with Councilman Hoagland. As we wrap this up, I think all things considered, this application is appropriate to go forward, providing the secondary access that's required. I don't think we can act otherwise in light of that public safety need. Hopefully, it's never needed, never used, but I just don't, I see that as a this is a more viable solution than the sprinkler solution that is behind the curve. So I agree with Councilman Hoagland to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Tom Pro.
I agree with my, with my fellow council members and I would, I'd just like to add to the applicant directly that it sounds like that they have made a commitment to do all they can to make sure that that isn't being used for a purpose other than what it's intended. So I would request that the, it sounds like that there are not, that individuals are not permitted to use the course or any, any area around the course to be walking, riding bicycles and whatnot, but it doesn't sound like that's really appropriately being enforced. So I would, I would just like to encourage the applicant to do all they can to you know, signs are great and gates are great, but they're not, they're not gaining the entire length of this of this easement. It's just at the, at both entrances. And so it's really not cutting back on pedestrian traffic truly. So I just would really like to encourage the owner and lessy of that property of the course to do all they can to. to prohibit trespassing in that location.
Councilman Kavner.
Question maybe for Councilmember Pro. Do you have any other recommendations aside from gates and signage that you'd like to see included?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Councilman Kavner, I'm under the assumption that the course has some sort of policy or process, both maybe, that they take to prevent a quote unquote trespassing or individuals on the course that are not golfing, because that's, that's something that was mentioned that already exists. So I would just expect them to continue to enforce it.
Home Secretary.
I think Councilman Hoagland has summed it up well. I think that the danger to the future homeowners and the ones that wouldn't be sprinkled outweighs the concerns that the neighbors may have adjacent to this road, which I believe will not be horrible. It will be smaller than depicted in the horrible picture of the giant dirt road. But I like the idea of specifying that DA provision that it's for emergency access only, if nothing else, and to give the neighbors at Balata Court comfort that, you know, the city is going to step up on their behalf if any of this doesn't happen, and that we're going to ensure that it's only for emergencies and for accessing our utilities and maintenance and Suez.
Captain Holland.
I would move that we close the public hearing on H 2020-0087.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move that we approve file H 2020-007 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of January 26, 2021, and to make sure conditions are in the DA that point to, that two gates be installed, one at each end of the emergency access, that there would be signage prohibiting access of appropriate language, and that language also be included that shows this is emergency access only, and for maintenance by public water and Public Works and Water Services at this site.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Kavner.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Vern.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much for all everyone's work on this. And Mr. Neri, if you can put this on your to-do to follow up with the county appropriately on any steps that we may need to address in the future if we're not taking the right ones. With that, we'll move on to item five, ordinances, and ask the clerk to read ordinance number 20-1913 by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance related to H 2020-0092 Goddard Creek Community for rezone of a parcel of land being lot two, block one of Goddard Creek subdivision, as filed in Book 114 of Platts at pages 17060 through 17062, and a portion of the southeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter of Section 26, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 5.03 acres of land from R4, medium low density or medium low residential zoning district to R15, medium high residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 211913 with a suspension of rules.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the item and a suspension of rules. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to. Next item is item six, ordinance number 20-1914. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to H 2020-0097, 2810 East Franklin, for annexation of a parcel of land, parcel of land situated in a portion of the southeast one quarter of Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 1.006 acres of land from RUT to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Also, you've heard this item read by title. Is anyone that like it read in its entirety? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 21194 with a suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the item is agreed to. Do we have anything under future meeting topics? If not, we're at item seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
We should have removed this from the agenda earlier. I believe that we don't, we've taken care of this business and aren't, this, we don't need to go into executive session. So I move that we strike item number seven from the agenda.
I have a motion, a second, to strike item from the seven from the agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, and we are adjourned.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.